Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 12, 2018 meeting of the City-County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the meeting or get into our agenda, we have a special presentation we'd like to make. Alan Younger, would you please step forward? Alan has served two terms on this planning board, spent the last five years sitting beside me as vice chair, and we'd like to recognize his service, and I've asked our newly-elected vice chair, Chris Leake, if he would make the presentation for us.
First of all, congratulations, Alan, and thank you for your service. This is a resolution honoring Alan Younger for his service as a member of the City-County Planning Board. Whereas the Winston-Salem City Council and the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners appointed Alan Younger to serve on the City-County Planning Board, and whereas Alan Younger served the citizens of Forsyth County and Winston-Salem as a member of the City-County Planning Board from October 2010 to March 2018, and whereas he has invested time and energy to thoughtfully understand and consider each item presented to the Planning Board for action, and whereas through his extensive contacts in the community, he has been able to contribute valuable insights concerning planning issues, the needs of small businesses, and the need to promote economic vitality in disadvantaged areas, and whereas he has demonstrated a keen interest in community awareness and involvement in the various proposals being considered by the Planning Board, and whereas he represented the City-County Planning Board in the public meetings for a number of area plan updates, including Walkertown, Southwest Suburban, Southeast Suburban, Northeast Suburban, and Southeast Winston-Salem. Wow. And whereas he worked along with his fellow Planning Board members in preparing and refining the award-winning Legacy 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and whereas he was elected vice chair of the City-County Planning Board and served in that role for four and a half years, now therefore be it resolved that Alan Younger is recognized for his volunteer service to the community through his membership on the City-County Planning Board. We extend sincere appreciation to you for that service and wish you health and happiness in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the public record and a copy of this resolution be furnished to Alan Younger. Adopted this the 12th day of April 2018 and signed by our board chair, Honorable John. Alan, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much. I was gonna ask for a copy of that. That sounds pretty good. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my family. Many of you have met my wife, Kelly, and my kids, Kalen, Trent, and Krista. And I was talking to my son this morning, and he said, "For as long as I can remember, you've been on the Planning Board." He's 18, and for the majority of his life, it feels to him, I've been on the Planning Board. I'd also like to thank the board members with whom I've served. Wesley Curtis, who I happened to see earlier this week; Lynn Mitchell, who I was surprised to see just a few moments ago; Barry Lyons; Paul Mulliken; Darrell Little; and then the current members, Arnold King; Brenda Smith; Clarence Lamb; Tommy Hicks; Melinda Dunningan; George Bryan; Jason Grubbs; Chris Leake; and of course Johnny Seegers, who took my seat. Just kidding. I've known Johnny for years, and I'm really glad that he is now on the Planning Board. I wanted to mention a couple things that I really have enjoyed the most about my time on the Planning Board. The wonderful staff led by Paul Norby. Public engagement, I've learned a lot about how the community feels about various issues and how it's our role to understand that and then make decisions largely based on that. And I've learned a lot about land use, a lot more than I ever dreamed or ever wanted to learn. I have learned about land use. And then it also helped me better understand economic development. Some of the things that I will not miss. Meetings longer than two hours. I will not be staying for the meeting, this meeting tonight, all of it. I won't miss calls and messages from strangers expecting me to promise on the spot to vote in a particular way. Y'all know what I'm talking about. And I also won't miss seeking your replacement, Paul. My planning board experience will continue to help me to be a better public servant in a variety of ways. And I served the community on the S.G. Atkins Community Development Corporation, the Forsyth Futures Organization, which seeks to use data to help organizations make better decisions, the Better Business Bureau, Venture Cafe, which seeks to expand and encourage more entrepreneurship in this community. As well, I'm a part of the Adult Educators Association. All the experiences that I had working with you and the public on various issues is gonna help me in all of those ways. So thanks again for this opportunity. Some of you know that I first found out about the Planning Board when I met Paul in 2009, when I was joining or just becoming a member of the 2010 class of Leadership Winston-Salem. I was so impressed with our case study that I said, "Hey, I would really like to be involved in that." I thought it was something that you just said and never hear about it again. A few months later, I got a phone call, and it's a phone call that changed my life in a lot of wonderful ways. So thank you all very much.
We're gonna miss you. And I'd like to take this opportunity to formally welcome Mr. Seegers to the board, and we look forward to working with you also, sir.
Thank you.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by Winston-Salem TV Digital Media. It'll be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is consent agenda. These are items where the petitioner has requested a withdrawal or continuance, or items where staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up in opposition. For public hearings today, each site has a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the Planning Board goes into work session, no one will be permitted to speak unless a Planning Board member asks a question. For general use zoning requests, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to a specific use. For special use zoning, however, the petitioner must identify the intended uses and very specifically give details of how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda or items will require final action by either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today or recommendations will go to them for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the March 8 and 22 meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now calling Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
All right. First item is item B1. It's only docket W-3358, and this is a request to rezonate about 10 acres from MUS II Phase to MUS. And you can see the site there in yellow. It's on the southwest corner of Hunley Road and Meadowlark Drive. It's part of the Brookberry Farms development. It's currently undeveloped. You can see the development pattern in the area. You've got single-family homes to the north, zoned RS9. You've got the schools across Meadowlark. To the south, you have apartments that are currently under construction. You can't tell by this map. And then you have some existing lots within the Brookberry Farms subdivision further to the west. And the reason for this rezoning is to add the used life care community. That was not included in the original rezoning for Brookberry Farms. It was approved by the Commissioners over a decade ago. And it's also to amend the site plan or the master plan for this area. So I'll take a couple minutes and kind of walk through this. Again, the use is for a life care community. You can see the proposed building, over 200,000 square feet, located here, four stories on the northern end, and transitioning back into a three-story building on the southern end here. Access will be located here in the southeast corner. This is on Meadowlark. This is the bus entrance to the school. So this proposed new public road would line up across from the bus entrance there, and access would be gained from Meadowlark here. And this public road would continue on westward to the property line to serve the balance of the Brookberry Farms property, and it would eventually tie back into Rosewind Drive, which is a main road within Brookberry Farms. Secondary access point on Hunley Road in this area, there would be a median break. Of course, as you know, Meadowlark Road is being widened as part of the 2014 Bond project. There would be a median extending down Meadowlark, but there would be a break here for access at this location as well. Speaking of the Meadowlark Drive frontage, there would be a retaining wall in this area to help with the grades that ranges in height from four to 10 feet, pretty much in this middle section of the site through here. On the backside of that wall, there would be landscaping and then feathering back into the access drives, parking areas, and back into the building. I want to spend a second to talk about this northern edge of the site. That's an area where staff spent some time with the developer to work on the transition between this four-story building and the existing single-family homes located on the north side of Hunley Road. We worked with a developer, a combination of setbacks, birmingham landscaping. So in terms of setbacks, from the northern facade of this building to the property line is roughly 90 feet. Then onward from the property line to the front doors of the fronts of those houses is another 90 feet, so approximately 180 foot of setback between the fronts of those homes and the front of this building here. Staff feels like that's a reasonable measure. We also worked with a developer to provide some birmingham landscaping along this northern edge. So there's a three-foot berm proposed in this area to be planted with a type III plantings to also offset those impacts to those neighbors. The combination of the setbacks, the birmingham and the landscaping, staff feels is appropriate in this area, and we're supportive of that. And the last issue to cover on the site plan is the stormwater. That's why this case was delayed one month to get the stormwater issues worked out. So in order for this site to fall under the previously approved Brookberry Farms stormwater plan, it had to remain under 30% total impervious coverage. And as you can tell, for a site this large and with this much development, that's very difficult to do. What the developer worked with stormwater staff on was the use of pervious pavement. And so if you can follow the mouse here, you see this darker shading where there's an access drive that comes in here, extends around a portion. That darker area is just traditional asphalt. The balance of the site, the access drives, the parking areas, would utilize pervious pavement. So for stormwater purposes, when you're using pervious pavement, it's counted and tallied the same way that grass is. It's 100% impervious. So when you look at all that area that's parking and drive aisles, and you add that up, it comes up to 29.87%, so it falls below the 30% threshold that stormwater laid out. I do want to add a caveat to this. In order for that pervious pavement to work, the soils have to be suitable, and the testing on the soils has not been done to this date. The fallback position would be that if the soils are not suitable, then the developer would have to comply with Chapter 75 of the City Code, which is a stormwater ordinance, and manage their stormwater on-site. And so they have shown a storm, underground stormwater device up here in the northeast corner, and they've also shown a stormwater device down here in the southeast corner. And so the way the stormwater condition is written in your report is basically saying that same thing. If the soils are suitable, you can go ahead and use the pervious pavement, stay below 30%. If they're not suitable, you're gonna have to install those, install the piping, get the water into those devices, and manage the water in the northeast and the southeast corners. So I just wanted to point that out so everybody's clear on that. Last, I just want to show you a couple images of elevations. This is the northern facade. This is the four-story facade that will be across the street from the residence on Hunley Road. This is what they would be looking at. And this is just a sample image taken from, this would be around the edge of Meadowlark and then the access point, the new public road that would connect in. This is looking north back into the site into the three-story portion of the site. So as our staff reviewed this, we felt this was a reasonable request. We felt it allowed for additional housing types in this area, and we also felt like it allowed for opportunities for seniors to age in place, which is one of the recommendations of legacy. So for those reasons, our staff is supportive of this request, and we would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs.
Could I ask Mr. King a question? I'm very happy to see this permeable pavement being used. What, is it an asphalt permeable, or what type is it?
Might want to bring the design engineer up for that, so he can comment on what types of materials they may be looking at.
Good afternoon. Luke Dickie with Stimel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. In answer to your question of what type of permeable pavement, we were looking at more like pavers, that will have the gaps in between the pavers, so it'd be the clay pavers and then the base material.
So a cement paver?
Yeah, like a brick paver or a cement paver would be the intent.
Thank you a lot.
Yep.
Any other questions? We have a motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is item B3. It's only docket W-3362, and this is a request to rezonate about 3/4 of an acre from limited business special use to limited business limited use. And you can see the site there on the northwest corner of South Main Street and McKinley Drive. It's got an existing commercial building on it currently, surrounded by residential zoning, RS9 to the north, to the east, and to the south. And then you've got Mount Hope Estates neighborhood across South Main Street that's got a mixture of RS9 and RM8s zoning in there. The area plan does recommend commercial for this site, so this is consistent with the recommendations of the area plan. And the gist of this request is to add the use of restaurants without drive-through and club or lodge. The request would also remove the use of motor vehicle repair and maintenance. And last, we do need to revise one of the conditions on this. We did get an email from one of the neighbors that lives along McKinley that had some concerns about the appearance of the site from McKinley. And in your staff report, we had recommending removing the driveway along McKinley and then planting, and there's a fence, an opaque wooden fence along McKinley that's in a little bit of disrepair. We had recommended removing the fence and planting it with a street guard. In discussions with the neighbor in this area, they said, "You know what? I think we'd rather just have the fence replaced and put back in the same area and not do the street guard." We talked with the developer about that. They were okay with that. They were fine revising the condition. And so what we would offer up is some revised wording. So for condition A, we would recommend deleting the first sentence and replacing it with the existing access drive. Along McKinley Drive should be removed and replaced with grass. And for condition B, remove the first sentence and replace it with, "In lieu of a street yard," the existing wooden opaque fence should be replaced with a new six-foot-tall wooden opaque fence installed in the same location as the existing fence. And I believe with those changes, the adjacent neighbor is satisfied with this request. So with that, staff would recommend approval.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Leake. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B5. It's only docket W-3364. This is a request to rezonate a little over eight acres from RS9 to institutional and public limited use zoning. And this is for the Quality Education Academy on the south side of Lansing Drive. You can see the site there. It's surrounded by residential zoning on three sides, and then on the western side, you've got a mixture of RM8s and IP zoning for some institutional uses there. The area plan does call for institutional zoning for this property, so we believe this request is consistent with those recommendations, and we would recommend approval of this IPL request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Hicks. Any discussion?
Could I ask Mr. King a question? Mr. King, when a property changes from the RS9 to the institutional, is buffering required? And where is that on this exactly?
It will be when there's new construction proposed on the site.
Just new construction?
Correct. The zoning change itself will not kick in the buffer.
Okay, so, and does that mean any new construction?
It will be, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anything that requires a permit? Okay, yep, sure.
Any other comments of motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, next item is item B7. It's only docket W-3366, and this is a request to rezonate about 11 acres from MUS II Phase to RM12S, residential multifamily, 12 units per acre, special use zoning. You can see the site there in yellow on the south side of Stafford Village Boulevard, just west of Peters Creek Parkway. You've got the Walmart directly east of the site and the Lowe's kind of to the northeast of the site. This was originally part of the Stafford Place development, which extended westward and actually went a little bit further than what's even shown on your map there. It was never developed. You do have some multifamily units that were developed along this western section here, and then recently we've had some additional multifamily units under RM18S zoning here. The original approval that City Council had for this site called for a pretty intense mixture of office and commercial uses on this site. This is the site plan that's been submitted, and this is for, again, for RM12S zoning for a total of 96 units. So to get you oriented, this is Stafford Place Boulevard here. There'd be one access point located right here that would line up with an existing driveway, one multifamily building lining the road here, and then access and circulation heading eastward with buildings, the three additional buildings lining what you see here. I do want to call attention to one thing. That plan that City Council previously approved over a decade ago, it called for some really intense development on this site. This site has a lot of challenges with respect to topography, streams, underground utilities. That plan had a ton of grading on it, a lot of retaining walls, a ton of development. This plan is much more respectful. It stays out of those stream buffers. It leaves a lot of those areas undisturbed, so it's much, much less impactful than what's currently approved for the site. The area plan does call for commercial for this site, but that is largely in part due to the previously approved plan that Council had in place. Staff is comfortable with the change to RM12S, and we believe that's reasonable, given the sidewalks we have in this area, given the proximity to transit, given the services that are available in this area. We're supportive of this request, and we would recommend approval.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question about how the stormwater was gonna be handled on this site, given the topography and the streams.
Yep, so there was, if you can kind of follow along here, this parcel is not included in your rezoning request, but the applicant is purchasing that. And so they have agreed to present a staff change that this parcel remains undeveloped. And so when you combine that acreage with this, they fall below the threshold to provide the stormwater detention on-site. So a lot of what's being captured is being discharged directly into those streams that are on-site.
But they would be required to purchase that land to the...
Yes, yes, that's in your conditions of approval.
Okay.
Any other questions? Have motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B8. It's only docket F-1576, and this is a request to rezonate about 32 and 1/2 acres from agricultural zoning to RS15S. And you can see the site in yellow. It's on the west side of Highway 66, just southeast of Kernersville. In fact, you can see Kernersville zoning limits up in the top edge of the screen there, the top left corner. You can see on the west side of Highway 66, the zoning is predominantly agricultural. You do have a subdivision to the south that's zoned RS30. And then on the east side of Highway 66, it's mostly RS20 zoning. This is a site plan that's been submitted with this request. It's not a PRD. It's just a conventional subdivision, so all of the lots are larger than 15,000 square feet in size. So to get you oriented, Highway 66 will be located here. The main access point would come in at this location. They are connecting to Musket Drive, which is located within the existing subdivision to provide connectivity between the two. They are also proposing a stub street going into the northern area of the adjacent property for future development there. And one last issue, we did receive comments from the town of Kernersville, and they shared one of our concerns, which was the view of the rear of these homes from Highway 66. And so we worked with the developer, and they were agreeable to providing a small berm with landscaping, a double row of evergreens on top of that to screen the backs of those units. So with that, the area plan does call for load density residential, which is zero to five dwelling units per acre. The density here is 1.99, so we feel it's consistent with those recommendations, and we would recommend approval of this request.
Anyone opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Could I ask Mr. King a question? After that... The way it was presented in our book, is this the new format that you'll be moving toward?
Yes. For the interdepartmental comments, yes.
Okay, and give me a couple of definitions. What's a call-out?
Okay, yep, so what you don't see is there's a plan. This plan is in our electronic plan review system, and so if somebody comes in and makes a comment and they say, "Provide buffer here," and they have an arrow pointing to that area, our system that classifies that as a call-out, so...
It actually puts it on the plan, and they see it.
Probably what would be good is that one of your future work sessions, we can kind of show you a little bit more how that works, and that might help provide some better context for you going forward.
Can you give me a quick definition of what it's a cloud plus?
Same thing. It's just an annotation that's put on there to provide comments, so...
Okay, you hit me with a surprise.
Yep, yep. We can work with you at a work session coming up in the future.
As I was saying, maybe moving forward, it might be something that we could actually work with IAS and see if there's a way that those can be printed out. I don't know, but...
Yeah, if you don't have the plan to go with it, I understand there's a little bit of disconnect there, for sure.
Okay, last case is Case C1. It's F-1575, and this is a special use permit for an LCID, a land clearing and inert debris, greater than two acres in size in agricultural zoning. And this is about 18 acres in size. It's on the north side of Watkins Ford Road. And again, this is adjoining Kernersville zoning jurisdiction. It's just east of High Point Road. And so for a special use permit at the Planning Board level, it's a Planning Board review. So we're not getting into sworn testimony. We're not doing findings of fact. It's simply a review of the site plan at this stage. The public hearing, the testimony, all those things will take place when this goes forward to the Commissioners, when they hold their public hearing. This is a site plan that's been submitted with this request, and so Watkins Ford is down here towards the bottom of the image. The access drive comes up along the eastern side here. The area designated for the LCID is in the middle of the site, and it's a little over six and 1/2 acres in size. The UDO does require a 100-foot setback, and they have shown that. They've noted that here with these blue call-outs, and those are shown there. So for site plan purposes, they do meet UDO requirements. Staff would recommend approval of this PBR request.
Move approval. Motion, Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Leake, any discussion?
I've got a quick question for Mr. King. Did staff have any concern? I mean, you've got a tremendous amount of development going on on Teag Lane, and you've got two schools at the other end of Teag Lane. Were there any concerns about the volume of traffic?
That didn't come up in our discussions. We did send it to Kernersville. They didn't have any comments on this, and I suspect that same amount of development that you referenced is probably leading to why this is being proposed at this location.
And do keep in mind that this is a Planning Board review of the site plan. It does have to get a Board of Adjustment special use permit, which, if there's any folks that have that concern, they can also come out and voice it, and that's quasi-judicial hearings, so...
You have other comments, questions? Have motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Gary Roberts will make the first presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. This item is zoning docket 3359, and the petitioner is Crystal Company and LLC and Crystal Corporation. The site is 3.76 acres, located on the southwest corner of Peters Creek Parkway and Academy Street. And the request is a special use limited request with no site plan from HB Highway Business and a little bit of RSQ Residential Single Family and Quadruplex to GBL General Business Special Use Limited. This is Legacy's growth management plan. It's located along Peters Creek Parkway, which is a growth corridor and growth management area to urban neighborhoods, and it's also within the West Salem Activity Center. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow. It's the current location of the Budget Inn. You see a couple of buildings there located on the site. It abuts up to Peters Creek, and its associated floodplain there on the eastern portion of the site, which is located between the site and Peters Creek Parkway. Northern edge of the site is Academy Street. You have some single-family, or excuse me, residential, single-family, quadruplex zoning just directly to the west, and more general use highway business zoning across both Academy and Peters Creek Parkway and directly to the south. Aerial photographs showing the development pattern of the area. The building directly to the south has recently been demolished. That was a previous car dealership, and another car dealership is now under construction, as you'll see in the images following. This is the southwest Winston-Salem Area Plan. It was adopted in 2016. Subject property there is shown for mixed use, Magenta, within the, again, the West Salem Area Plan, or West Salem Activity Center there at the intersection of Academy and Peters Creek Parkway. So this site is really well situated for a more intense and dense development, both residentially or commercially, being located close to downtown, along a growth corridor, which has extra capacity, Peters Creek Parkway does, and it's within an activity center, where pedestrian-oriented development is recommended. And this site really is kind of a gateway, not only to downtown, but kind of entryway into the Ardmore neighborhood directly to the west and the West Salem neighborhood across Peters Creek Parkway to the east. These images are taken on site. This is from Peters Creek Parkway into the development site there, which is the Budget Inn. It's a little bit dark here. This is looking east on Academy Street, the subject property to the right that's looking down towards the intersection, directly into the site from Academy. If you're familiar with this site, you may know that there was an entrance there at one time. There's a driveway cut there. It's been gated off. There are some site issues there, both topographically, well, really topographically looking up to the west, pulling out of the site. The slope makes that kind of problematic, and so that gate was put there for a reason. But if this site, because of its size, develops with a very intense manner, we'd like to see at least an emergency access there. DOT has agreed to that, and the petitioner has agreed to that condition. So that would not be a regular access that would be used. It would cause problems on Academy, but it is kind of a safety valve in case of emergency. Taken from about the same location, looking west on Academy Street, the subject property is just off to the left. This is back on Anson Street, looking east into the West Salem neighborhood in the back of the shopping center there. This is looking down on the roofs of the subject property, and this is looking at the former car dealership that I mentioned earlier down along Peters Creek Parkway. The GBL zoning, general business, is more consistent with the mixed use recommendations of the area plan in regard to the Activity Center and, again, the growth corridor. General business does allow for some more intense uses that are allowed in the current highway business zoning, but the petitioner's worked well with staff on removing some of those uses that I'll mention here in just a moment. And it does allow for residential. A residential use is not allowed, both detached and multifamily in the current zoning. So therefore, it's much more consistent with the area plan recommendation for mixture of uses. As I mentioned, Peters Creek Parkway is a growth corridor. We increase density, residential density is recommended, therefore the request is consistent with that. And as I mentioned, Peters Creek Parkway is ample capacity, and it's well-served with transit and sidewalks. And the request may hopefully facilitate some reinvestment and redevelopment of not only this property, but the surrounding properties. There are a couple of conditions on this site. Again, there's no site plan, but the petitioner's have agreed to a lighting condition for the northern, along Academy, the eastern, along Peters Creek Parkway, and the western frontages, which that's a half-foot cantiletted property line. They've also agreed to monument signage condition there along Academy, which is, again, an entrance to the Ardmore neighborhood, and the emergency access condition onto Academy Street. Proposed uses which are currently not allowed in HB. So these are the uses that the petitioner would like to have, that is included in the request, that are not currently allowed in the highway business district. Again, there's a little bit of RSQ there, but I did not include that as far as the residential uses because of its small proportion of the overall site. But in the HB area, these are uses that are not allowed, the petitioner would like to have. Combined use, that allows somebody to develop property with any use allowed in the underlying district in combination with a residential use. So that's what that means. That use is not allowed in HB because HB does not allow any residential uses. Nursery care institution, wholesale trade A, childcare institution, family group home B and C, life care community and multifamily uses. Those are uses that are not allowed in the current zoning that petitioner is requesting. There's also several uses that petitioner has agreed to remove. Some of these are allowed in the current HB zoning, some of these are not. They're allowed in the proposed GB zoning, such as correctional institution and adult establishment, but all these uses the petitioner has agreed to take off the board. So I will let you glance at those without reading through those. Some pretty intense uses that the petitioner has agreed to remove. So staff's recommendation is for approval. We feel it's consistent with the adopted area plan, and it's a great location on a corner lot there, again, within the West Salem Activity Center, and we feel like the GB district is a lot more appropriate than the current zoning. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Gary, it's time.
Yep. Gary, you gave us some uses that were being asked to be included. Are those uses under GB?
Some of these are, the latter few, I'm sorry, the ones that are being included.
I'm asking the ones included, the ones they're asking for that are not allowed in HB, right?
Right.
The uses shown here, now, all of these uses are not allowed in the current zoning.
They're not allowed in the current zoning. Aren't there more uses that are being included by changing it to GB? Or is this all that's going to be asked for?
No, no, these are the new uses. This is the difference between what they've got now in HB and what they're proposing in GBL. And your staff report there in your docket, I mean, in your book, shows all the uses that they're asking for.
So I need to understand this precisely. I didn't compare the HB with the GB, okay? I didn't have lists side by side and look at it. In the general business, are there more uses than were in the HB?
Yes.
Besides this?
No, these are the only new uses that they're asking for.
These are the only new ones?
That's correct.
So let me provide some context. The HB list and the GB list, the total uses are generally comparable. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but they're pretty close. When the applicant came to the counter to submit, we took the list, we printed off all the uses that are allowed in GB, and we went through them one by one, and they eliminated the uses in GB that they didn't want. And that's what you've got in your book right now. They've taken that GB list, and they've pared it down to what you've got in your book right now.
And of course, the other issue which you're minimizing a bit is that there is RSQ there, which is quite different from GB.
Yes, that's correct. And RSQ obviously allows for the multifamily uses.
And there are, when RSQ is next to other zoning, that requires other zonings to do certain things as well, doesn't it?
Yes, there's buffering required adjacent to RSQ.
So if you remove, but there will still be RSQ up on the corner, right?
That's correct.
In terms of what this is being asked for?
That's correct. There's a house right on the corner of Anson and Academy. That would stay RSQ.
Okay, would you go to the next one, then, that, the things that are being removed? And is this what we saw in our book?
Yes.
This list right here?
Yes, well, the list in your book is the complete list of uses that they're asking for. I just culled out the ones that are actually being removed from the current zoning and the proposed GB.
So when I told you we met with the applicant at the counter and we scratched out uses, those are the uses.
Right.
And they're not proposed with this request.
And some of these, probably about the first half, are already allowed in the GB, the HB, and then some of them are only allowed in the GB, but all of them are off the table.
So issues that are shared, like restaurants with drive-through, is still in the list?
That's correct.
And that's in an HB as well?
That's correct.
But not in an RSQ?
That's correct.
Okay. I hope I'm clear.
Well, Gary, could I ask you one more question? I did look at that list, and I thought the one thing that I saw here that was in GB but not in HB and still on the list is entertainment facility large. Is that allowed in HB?
Yes, with an elected body special use permit. With elected body special use.
Okay.
The only use, I'm sorry, the only use that a entertainment facility large is allowed in by right is the E District. In the HB, GB and CB district, they are all E, elected body special use permits.
Any other questions, staff? We're going to get into the public hearing, and don't go anywhere, Gary. First person signed up is Kelly Carpenter.
Gary.
Sure.
Gary Merritt, board member, North Carolina Housing Foundation, 750 Bethesda Road, Before I get into land use, let me kind of give you a little history about how we got here. 2010, Piedmont Together was a million-six HUD study for the Piedmont Triad to look at our housing, help sustainable communities. That study reveals some key strategies for housing, which included stimulate more housing close to jobs, services and transit, revitalize redevelopment opportunities, areas including investment and infill areas, promote mixed-use development income. Mayor's Poverty Task Force Initiative October 15, and their report come out February of 17. Key recommendation was expand affordable housing in redevelopment areas. Gary talked about the Southwest Winston-Salem Area Plan, and those plan recommendations were revitalize older multifamily areas west of Peters Creek Parkway, follow the recommendations for the plan to specific sites for mixed use, including residential development. The fire housing assessment that was completed in November of 17 talked about focused on new construction of affordable housing in neighborhoods that offer greater access and Improve mobility for low and moderate-income residents. You know, we've all participated in these initiatives, these studies, and we wondered what happens after we get done with the book. Well, that's what we're here to talk about today. The Housing Foundation, the Shalom Project and the Peters Creek Parkway Initiative have been working several years on producing affordable housing. It came very clear to us that this opportunity on Academy and Peters Creek Parkway would give us the ability to recycle some very tired, functionally obsolete property. For a lot of years in the development business and the market side, residential and retail just didn't work. We weren't there yet. But in recent years, with the redevelopment of downtown and the factors in the marketplace now, it's very acceptable to have retail and services on the first floor and residential above. We feel that this would be a very appropriate use for changing the gateway to Southern Gateway to Winston-Salem. That this redevelopment of this property would do a lot of the same things that we did when we built Golar Manor in Innovation Quarters. We were up there a lone soldier by ourselves. We're not alone up there anymore, you know? And so this, on our group's opinion, and this is a committee of a lot of volunteers, this is a property that we would like to change the use to redevelopment and provide both mixed use, multi-development and retail on the ground level. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to respond to them. One thing I will say, as I talked to the owner representative this afternoon, and we talked about the drive-through on the restaurant, and they're very agreeable to that condition. If you wanted to change that or add that, is eliminate a restaurant with a drive-through. Would you add any questions?
Carpenter, would you like to speak now?
Have eight minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Kelly Carpenter, 820 Miller Street, Winston-Salem, 27103. I am a board member of the Shalom Project, the partnering agency with the North Carolina Housing Foundation on this project. I drive by this property at least two times a day, sometimes six times a day, depending on what I left at home. As a resident of Ardmore and I work in West Salem at Green Street Church, our work with the Shalom Project is about serving the residents all across the city, but especially for those that are in the West Salem corridor and around Peters Creek. About 10 years ago, we began the Peters Creek Community Initiative to look at ways that we could do some economic development up and down the Parkway. We were instrumental in getting the RUKA plan and the money through and gathering businesses there. One of the businesses that joined our initiative was the Hubbard Realty Company, and their development of the West Salem Shopping Center with some of that money has been really powerful. We also worked along with the city for a traffic plan, looking at possible ways that Peters Creek could be adjusted to make it more safe for residents that were closest there. In working with Hubbard Real Estate, one story that continued to come up with us was the desire to try to get a grocery store in the West Salem Shopping Center, and a number of people who came in and looked at that as a possibility looked across the street at the Budget Inn and said, "That's a problem," and prevented that opportunity. It does qualify as a food desert in that particular area, and we are most concerned with the people who live closest to the Parkway and the safety that is not provided in that area. We then want to really work with those residents and give them a different opportunity. This project provides work for workforce housing, and we are committed to working alongside the residents of those 60 units, to give them assistance to move out of being working poor to being middle-class. And we think that this could be an anchor development for that area as the area, but we hope the area develops in a more positive way. Our presence down on Peters Creek Parkway, we want to help foster that development so that we can ensure that it serves the neighbors instead of more strip clubs, pawn shops and check cashing places. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Saying none, then we'll turn to the opposition. Bonnie Kraus?
My name is Bonnie Kraus. I live at 2001 Boone Avenue, Winston-Salem, 27103. I speak as a member of the zoning committee of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association. The association's mission, as we have stated before at this microphone, is to preserve and protect the essentially residential character of the neighborhood and to resist encroachment institutional and commercial and educational. We're between two great medical centers, but we feel constant pressure and are pinched by them daily with proposed expansions of a nature that would alter the character of the neighborhood and increase traffic and other types of costs that the neighborhood would pay in order for those institutions to expand. We also have churches. We definitely are proud of the churches that are in our neighborhoods and the great work that they do, but sometimes they too want to expand past what the association believes will be beneficial to the entire neighborhood. So I want to make it clear that, speaking today for the Ardmore Neighborhood Association, this is in no way an objection to or a reflection of our esteem for the Shalom Project. Please keep that in mind. You will be hearing me repeat that, and I'll be as brief as I can. Again, I said what our mission is, is to preserve the essential residential characteristics of the neighborhood. That does not mean we oppose all development. In fact, we have supported quite a lot, including an expansion of a dog boarding and training center and some other things. Ardmore's not a museum. It is not frozen in time. The homes and trees and leafy streets are not exhibits on display for the public. It is a living organism, and as such, it is going to grow and is going to change. And we not only recognize that, we revel in it. It is a great neighborhood, but the characteristics that we're eager to keep about that want watching. And for 40 years, the Ardmore Neighborhood Association has been chartered to... to do just that. Our membership is not made up of people whose individual interests we represent. The members are individuals who support the mission of the organization. Ardmore is widely perceived as welcoming, open, and diverse neighborhood. We have the medical centers and numerous clinics and businesses all around, up and down Cloverdale and other places. The objections we have to what is being proposed right now is not because we don't want that corner of Peters Creek and Academy improved. We do. It's not because we don't trust that the work and integrity of the Shalom Project will in some way disappoint us. We do not believe that for a moment. I and everybody else I know supports that organization. What we are concerned about, however, that what is before you this afternoon is not a referendum on whether the Shalom Project is a worthy organization. It's not a referendum on their intentions. We're being asked to agree to rezoning of a parcel of land that if for any reason the Shalom Project's operation did not go through, either through, I realize they hate to even think about a failure to get the funding together or whatever, but an opportunity could be presented. Somebody could just up and offer them a gift of a wonderful piece of land slightly further up the road, and they would take that opportunity and leave that rezoned property behind right for the plucking. So we've had some conversations already with the developer about pulling out some of what would be the allowed uses if that parcel is rezoned. Right now, it is somewhat protected by some residential zoning on part of that land. But if all of that is combined and rezoned as is permissible right now, it would have some pretty undesirable potential. I want to read in the allowed uses if what is being proposed, as it is right now, were to go through, and if Shalom Project decided not to use that, certainly somebody else would come in and do that. Right now, it could have building contractors, general building material supply, a cemetery, a club, or a lodge. It could have a funeral home, a convenience store, outdoor display retail, parking, shuttlelot parking, a drive-through restaurant. It could have storage services or retail. It could have a warehousing. It could be a borrow site, which involves massive amounts of earth moving and unsightly, permanent unsightly, use of that land in ways that will benefit other people's property and other locations. Again, these, our objections are not having to do with the worthiness of the Shalom Project. We definitely want affordable housing. It's something the Ardmore Neighborhood Association has championed, probably ahead of most organizations in the city. We want to have further discussions with the developer and find a way to work it in. We would hate to see that door closed completely to us because our desire is to support this project, but we would want some serious discussions about additional use, allowed uses removed from the proposal as it is before it is rezoned. Were that to happen, it's almost a slam dunk that the Ardmore Neighborhood Association would approve this unconditionally, were those things taken care of. So we did want additional time to talk with the developer because it was not really in the minds, I think, well, I know it was not in the minds of our board members or the committee members when the initial conversations and the initial expressions of support took place. I believe everyone assumed there would be a site plan, and there is not. There are real questions about how the ingress and egress would be handled, the effect on traffic, which is already a nightmare intersection. Their drawing that they showed, that's in the materials submitted to you and that we looked at last night at the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance meeting, the drawing did not take into account, in fact, I'm not even sure they knew, about the expansion of Academy. They're adding a lane, a traffic lane to Academy that's well underway. All the telephony utility poles have been moved, and that will directly impact their setback requirements. They are potentially looking at a loss of units, housing units, as a result of the narrowing of that part of the property. Because the plan that we saw last night, which is really sort of a rendering, not a site plan, but a suggested outline or footprint, apparently did not even know that Academy is being widened at that very spot, and that concerns us. It seems that we could have more productive conversations about more specific uses with them, and if that were the case, if this committee were to either postpone by one session one month to give us time to sit down with them, in all goodwill, all goodwill, to come up with things that the ANA could remove, any objections that we do have, it would be a win for everybody. That is what we would like to do. Short of that, our remaining recourse would be to go to the city council meeting and bring up these same things. But between now and then, surely we could talk with these folks and work some of this stuff out. We're very concerned. We've seen this before, where property was rezoned, everybody's intentions were great, somebody couldn't make it go, or as I said, maybe they got a better offer and went down the road and took that. It's happened. But then what happens in that place is really, really undesirable. This is a highly visible gateway to a wonderful neighborhood, and it faces another wonderful neighborhood, West Salem, which also will benefit from improvements at that intersection. But at the present and in its current form, the Ardmore Neighborhood Association cannot give its unconditional approval. We'd like to, but there are some serious concerns here. We do want affordable housing. We do want Shalom as our neighbor. I support them personally. My aunt, who's fairly well off, who every now and then wants to give me expensive jewelry, we last, a few years ago, decided instead of gifts, that we would have her, our favorite charities, and she would give that money instead. And I designated the Shalom Project as the recipient of my, what would be in lieu of my Christmas gift. It's not because we don't trust them to be good neighbors. It's because we're concerned what will happen to that property, which will be greatly more valuable with this rezoning, should they leave or vacate or not be able to go through with their plans. One of the reasons Ardmore is such an appealing neighborhood, and when you think about it, there is practically, you'd have to go wide and far to find attractive residential property that is as well buffered from commercial encroachment as this one. And I will give at least part of the credit to a neighborhood association that for more than 40 years has been laboring just for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Magnus?
About three and a half minutes.
Won't need three and a half. Julie Magnus, 630 Fenimore Street, 27103. I share quite a bit with Kelly in that I also go back and forth past that property to work every day and back home again, and sometimes also have to make that retreat trip because I have forgotten things. I will also say, you know, I am completely in favor of this project, but what I want to really get back and come around to is that RSQ, piece of zoning that is a part of that stretch. I have to admit, last night at the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance meeting, I was a little offended that the approach was to somewhat threaten that if full support didn't come through, just look what might go in here. Instead, you might get stuck with a drive-through restaurant, which I realize that has now been taken off the board. The truth of the matter is that because of that RSQ planning, anybody's going to have to come in and get rezoning to be able to put those uses in. And so I think that really in good faith, to, as Bonnie said, to really get behind this proposal, there are more uses that need to come off because we aren't looking at a site plan. We aren't looking at any kind of a commitment at this point. There are a lot of steps that need to be taken care of, and it does, I just think that we're opening up a can of worms to approve it with all those extra conditions. That RSQ is sitting there. It doesn't necessarily have to become site. I want to see this property go. I, it's a nightmare. I will admit that it is refuge for some of my own students when they become homeless. Fortunately, it's only temporary because of Project Hope, but they don't need to have to live in there. It'd be so much nicer to have good affordable housing, especially with Ardmore Terrace and Cloverdale seemingly coming to demise. I know they're only offering three-month leases there. Love to see this project move along faster. I know that this would delay things even more, but at the Ardmore Neighborhood Association or at the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance meeting, you know, we were just looking, was this really the best possible zoning that could go in there? Would a special use type zoning be a better feasibility? I'm just going to get right back to, as is, those, all those extra uses above and beyond what's been eliminated are very dangerous for what happens at that corner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me see if I can understand the RSQ. That portion of RSQ that's highlighted in yellow is being rezoned, right?
That's correct.
So I'm not sure what part, what it is that the objection is on the RSQ. What's the?
I believe the RSQ doesn't allow the uses that the H, that the current HB does, and they're bringing in HB and RSQ and rezoning it to GBL, so they're adding commercial uses in an area that currently only has residential, just that RSQ portion.
Okay. Is anyone else that likes to speak?
It's like a minute left.
You got a minute left? Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Charles Douthat, 1200 Trillium Circle, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27606. I'm the owner of, well, I'm the managing member of the owner of the Ledges Apartments and also 96 Ardley Apartments, which used to be called Ardmore Square. I acquired Ledges Apartments in 98, and they were a mess. Shortly after I acquired the Ledges, the owner of Ardmore Square asked if I wanted to buy Ardmore Square. The Ardmore community encouraged me to acquire Ardmore Square, which I did. It was the worst managed property I've ever seen, and I have seen some, a few bad ones. And, okay. It's the only complex I've ever changed the name of that I've acquired. I've worked a long time to get the property, almost 20 years, to get the two properties in very good shape, and they are in very good shape. I stay there when I come from Raleigh, which almost every week, when I come from Raleigh, I stay in the model, sort of like the second home in a way. But my objection, and I object to this property, I mean, that's a proposal, because it has 60 subsidized apartment complex, apartment units in it. They're in competition with, directly in competition with me, and I'm the private sector. I've invested a lot of capital into my two properties, of whether the recession that occurred.
We'll pass the time, so we wrap up if you would, please.
Okay. Well, I think a lot of subsidized units turn out to be not so good, and in talking to Mr. Mitter yesterday afternoon, I think it was, he was not familiar with some of the complexes that I mentioned that were subsidized, that if I were, if I were buying, if I were building an apartment complex, I would certainly know what, what some of the complexes in Winston-Salem were like. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm now declared, the public hearing closed, and we're in a work session. Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter. Any consideration for eliminating some of these uses, or do you want to stick with all the uses that you've requested?
I believe we saw a list earlier that was given to us, and we would be okay with all of those. Is that right, Gary?
So let me elaborate on that. So when we got the email earlier about the concern about the wide range of uses, I took the list of, in the book, and I underlined some ones that I think would probably suit what they're trying to do, and then the rest of them could perhaps be removed. That was just my recommendations to them, so we probably need to kind of get that up if we're going to go that route and kind of go through those and make sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
Well, I mean, do we have some sort of an understanding on eliminating some uses?
Probably, I'll state what they are.
Have you got the list?
I don't.
Where's the list?
No, not that. This is a list that he gave us.
This is, this is. As long as the neighborhood's gonna. Now, it underlines what you want to keep or eliminate. Keep.
It won't zoom, yeah, it won't zoom in any further, but I can kind of run through them. The ones that underlined, the ones that I recommended were arts and crafts studio, banking and financial services, childcare drop-in, church or religious institution, community and neighborhood, combined use, food or drug store, furniture and home furnishing store, government offices, neighborhood organization, post office, institutional vocational training facility, public library, museum or art gallery, offices, police or fire station, restaurant without drive-through, retail store, school vocational or professional, services A, urban agriculture, childcare for sick children, child daycare center, life care community, and then the residential uses.
Do you raise it up, please?
Oh, sorry. Then the residential uses, multifamily, townhouse, twin home, duplex, and then both of the school uses, public or private. So again, not, not knowing exactly what they had in mind for the first floor of that building, this is just kind of my stab in it, so.
Ms. Kraus? What uses underlined there would you find objectionable?
I'm actually not in a position to directly compare because of vision issues, but I'll tell you the ones specifically that we have, and I don't believe that has been cross-referenced with the ones they have. Objectionable would be building contractors, general, building material supply.
That's the other side.
Some of them have, I'm just, but I'm going to read through because I believe there's a little bit of overlap here. Cemetery, a club or lodge, funeral home, and then we drop down to outdoor display retail, parking shuttlelot, parking commercial, restaurant with drive-through, storage services retail, utilities, warehousing, and borrow site.
I don't believe any of those are even.
100%.
They've eliminated all yours, plus.
Plus more.
Plus more.
What about the restaurant without drive-through service? I think that was one she said she wanted.
She said with, right.
With, okay.
Right.
Yeah, then we're good.
So, so they've gone beyond what you found objectionable.
Since what was initially, initially proposed?
Yes.
We're just in the last five minutes.
Yeah, I think we could go with that. I don't see any objections. These, the specific objections we have is if it's zoned so that those uses were permissible and Shalom ends up not using that project, we are 100% vulnerable to the good or bad intentions of who else comes in.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carpenter, are there any uses that Erin didn't underline that you feel like you need?
No.
You're good with this?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Point of order, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner hasn't spoken today, right? According to our book. Does that matter in terms of these?
That's the property owner. I mean, they basically, they have signed the application consenting to their, to this rezoning going through, but it's not uncommon for the property owner not to speak. In fact, several cases you had on consent, the property owner was.
Okay, okay. It's just we were changing, making changes.
We sent an email that was very close to what the lady read and what Erin has put on here to the owner representative, and they were in agreement with it.
It's good news, Mr. Merritt. Okay, move approval with the change in.
Seconds.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Leake. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? As unanimous. Thank you.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Lamb and then Mr. Leake? I was frightened. All right, thank you.
Well, Lamb and Leake.
Thank you.
Well, no, Ardmore's still going to be here.
That's true. Yeah.
Next item should be before.
It'll be four.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next item on your agenda is zoning docket 3363. Petitioners, LRB Farms LLC. Petitioner is LRB Farms LLC, and the site is 7.67 acres located on the northwest, northeast corner of Silas Creek Parkway and Ebert Street. The request is a special use rezoning from RS9 residential, single family, to RM8S residential multifamily with a maximum density of eight units per acre and LOS limited office for the sole use of offices. Legacy's growth management plan, it's located within the urban neighborhoods, growth management area two. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there highlighted in yellow. It's a former farm location, a single-family home and a few accessory buildings currently located on the site. It's primarily undeveloped. The southern border of the site is Silas Creek Parkway, the western border is Ebert Street. You have single-family zoning, catty corner across Silas Creek Parkway and directly across Ebert. Further north, you have a church and RS9 zoning going into the Ardmore neighborhood. Have some multifamily, fairly dense multifamily zoning to the southeast, directly to southeast of the property, RM18, and then some office zoning across Silas Creek Parkway. Aerial photographs show the development pattern of the site and the surrounding area. And the southwest Winston-Salem area plan, this was adopted in 2016, recommends intermediate density residential for this property. All the yellow is single-family residential, that's the Ardmore. The browns and tans are multifamily residential, blue are institutional uses, red, commercial, and offices recommended for across the street. The area plan specifically recommends a blending of residential with higher densities along Silas Creek Parkway, going back to lower-density attached homes in the back portion adjacent to the institutional zoning. These images are taken on site. This is from Silas Creek Parkway around the State Employees Credit Union driveway looking into the site, directly adjacent to the site, single, the multifamily residential that I mentioned to you earlier that's currently the neighbor there. Also from Silas Creek, looking back at the intersection and the median there at Ebert and Silas Creek Parkway, and the State Employees Credit Union across the street. The building elevations that are being proposed are actually similar to this office building here. Over on Ebert Street, this is looking south, the site is to the left, this is looking along the new sidewalk and widening that was recently done. And then looking north on Ebert, the site is to the right, you have the church in the background, and single-family homes directly across the site, across Ebert Street. This is a proposed site plan, and just to give you a brief orientation, it's divided into two areas. Silas Creek Parkway, again, along the southern border of the site, that section divided by the yellow dotted line is proposed for LOS limited office. It's two office buildings, total of approximately 30,000 square feet. The parking there located to the side or rear, so the buildings are pulled up to the street in a good pedestrian-oriented fashion, and I'll show you the elevations here. The building architecture is excellent, we feel like, and residential in character. There'll be some lateral sidewalk connections, they're proposing a new sidewalk along Silas Creek Parkway, a bus transit station there. And they're also proposing an entrance, so it has some good internal connectivity to the northern portion. That's where the RM8 is proposed. 32 townhouses there, one and two-story townhouses, that's about a little less than, a little bit more than seven units per acre, so really not very dense at all, we're talking about 32 units. The area plan recommended about 76 units on the overall site, so as far as the number of residential units, it's a little bit less than half than what the area plan calls for. Of course, they're showing some office as well, some open space over to the right there, and that's where stormwater management would be as well. The townhouses are along public streets, and they would have sidewalks on both sides of that street, lateral connections there and to the sidewalk along Ebert Street. They've also oriented, it's kind of hard to see from this perspective, but the two units in units that are closest to Ebert Street are, actually would address Ebert Street, so they would not turn their backs on those units. That was something that the petitioner agreed to do. Petitioners worked extensively with staff on coming up with a reasonable development plan that comes up with a good transition from the intense activity along Silas Creek Parkway back into the residential area. And we will also commend the developer on working extensively with the Ardmore Neighborhood Association and the surrounding property owners. Multiple meetings have been held, and I think you got our first book of neighborhood outreach that we've got, summarizing all their efforts, so we do commend them on that for coming up with a comparable design that we feel like is comparable to what the area plan recommends as far as intensity. They're showing a 15-foot type-two buffer yard along the northern edge there where it abuts single-family residential zoning. These are the building elevations of the townhomes. I think I said one story earlier, but they are all two-story. And the building elevations of the multifamily, excuse me, of the office buildings, this is a 20,000-square-foot office building, this is as it would look from Ebert Street, so again, we feel like very attractive, a mixture of materials, pitched roofs, residential detailing, we feel will really add value and serve as an anchor into the residential neighborhood there. And this is the one-story office building located further to the east along Silas Creek Parkway. So the proposed RM8S portion of the site is consistent with the residential recommendations of the area plan. And as I mentioned, the LOS portion is along Silas Creek Parkway, which is a growth corridor. And there are some growth corridor recommendations within the area plan that I'd like to point out, so we feel like it's consistent with those. Silas Creek Parkway is a growth corridor, and the text of the area plan there, you can see, I've got it underlined in pink, it says develop, and this is the Silas Creek Parkway specific growth corridor recommendations, develop new commercial office, which is consistent with the plan, and multifamily uses with a suburban form between Peters Creek Parkway and Ebert Street, as between Bolton and, as well as between Bolton and Business 40. So it's consistent with that recommendation of the area plan. The height, massing and architecture of the proposed office buildings are generally compatible with the surrounding development pattern in the area. The proposed mixed-use development is comprehensively designed and coordinated with coordinated access and good inner connectivity. So instead of a piecemeal approach to this seven-acre site, it's really a good, coordinated, comprehensively planned site. And the site will not have access on the Silas Creek Parkway, I did not mention that earlier, but they did do a TIS, TIA, a transportation impact study. The development will increase traffic, it'll increase the traffic by about three times what the current zoning would allow, up to a little over 1,200 trips per day. So it will increase the traffic there on the area, but the area plan or the transportation impact analysis said that there will not be any resulting improvements that are needed. The still, the level of service will still stay the same, there will be a little bit of a delay, I think an eight-second delay during the peak times, but, so no roadway improvements are required as per the TIA. So staff recommends approval, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And I wanted also to mention that although the property is owned, single-family residential, looking at the surrounding development pattern, looking at the intensity of that intersection there, we really do not see that it's really practical to expect that single-family homes are going to be developed on that property, again, considering the surrounding development pattern. So we feel like it's a good blending of uses, having the office, which is not a commercial, not a restaurant with a drive-through, very intense use, offices are typically not that intense, transitioning into the multifamily. So staff does recommend approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Gary, I had a question about the site plan, if you could pull that up.
Yes.
It shows this lot off to the right that's not being proposed for rezoning, I think they call it Lot Number Three.
Yes.
And it looks like they've got some tree save on the lot?
That's correct.
My question really, because this lot extends to Miller Street. I was just wondering if it would be possible for the, at any point in time, to extend that public road in the townhome portion of the site so that it connected to Miller through this lot?
They would have to come back for a site plan amendment, which would go back before you and city council if they were to do that.
Could you do it on RS9 without rezoning?
Well, you could access that lot, yes, and that lot is going to be used for some stormwater and tree save area that's off-site, it does not necessitate rezoning, but obviously it fronts on Miller, they could have a driveway and put a house on that site, or maybe two if they could subdivide that and meet ordinance requirements. But as far as connecting into this development, that would necessitate a site plan amendment on this portion here, that would have to go back before you and city council.
Okay, and the tree save on this RS9 Lot Three, how would that work if they ever decided to redevelop that, since it's tree save for the...
They would have to provide tree save elsewhere if they ever wanted to develop it, because that's how they're meeting the tree save requirements, if they took those trees away, then they would have to go back and meet that sum up, more than likely through new plantings on the site. I mean, we have a condition in your report for recording an easement for the tree save area on Lot Three in there to tie that down.
Any other questions?
Could I ask Mr. Roberts? In the slide that you had that showed the zoning to the east and to the north, can you go back to that one? It's one of your first ones.
The zoning map?
Yeah. Okay, so what we have to the east that you're showing down there with the RM18?
Yes.
Is currently multifamily, right? Now, this track actually goes over to Miller, and you're not, you didn't really talk about what was next to this track where it hits Miller, but are those all private residential homes there?
Well, this track does not go to Miller Street. What's being proposed for rezoning does not connect to Miller, that there's some property...
Because they're taking that out of it, but it's part of the tree save.
It's part of the tree save, but not part of the rezoning.
You don't have to...
You don't have to...
You don't have to rezone it to use it for tree save. Tree save is allowed in any district, so you don't have to rezone.
Or stormwater management.
But is that viable, single-family homes on down Silas Creek?
I'm not, I'm not...
I mean, that's what it is, I mean, it's being used as, it's not boarded up or anything?
Oh, to the west of this site.
To the east.
Okay, yes, west.
Are you talking about Miller Street?
I'm talking about along Silas Creek.
Yes, there's, or single-family homes along Silas Creek to the west and to the east of the site, yes.
Now, you showed a picture of a house just north of this, and that's a single-family home? Is that remaining?
Well, it had the church in the background.
Right, but there was a brick house in the foreground of that?
Yes, there is one house that would be located between this property and the church, that would remain, that's not on the subject property.
And so that's a single-family home as well?
That fronts on Ebert.
Okay. I may want to come back to that area plan later on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Nielsen? An East Carolina logo on the screen earlier, probably messed all that up.
Come on now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Don Nielsen, my address is 100 North Cherry Street, Winston-Salem, and I represent the petitioner. I'm going to, just to give you an outline, I'm going to make some introductory remarks, then Barrett Hagan, the developer with Hagan Engineering, he'll talk primarily about our neighborhood outreach and the support we've received. Barrett is a former Ardmore resident, and he's also an expert in stormwater engineering if there are stormwater questions that come up. Also with us is Jason Kemp, Jason Clapp, who's with Raimi Kemp, which, and they did the traffic study, he's here, and also are the Eberts, who own the property, as well as some neighborhood support that Barrett will talk about and introduce. We, of course, agree with the staff's report and rely on that extensively. I will perhaps shorten my remarks a little bit because they have been covered a great deal by what Gary's already said, but we did prepare a short PowerPoint presentation. Next, okay. You know, this site has been in the Ebert family since 1860, and this part in blue that you see on the screen is the last remaining undeveloped tract, and it's been vacant and on the market for a long time. Our neighbors, of course, they don't want intense development, and we're not proposing intense development, but residential, as the staff report notes, is a difficult proposition right close up to Silas Creek. The answer to the difficulty there, the answer is in the area plan, it's in Legacy, and it's in the UDO, the answer is using limited office as a transition, as a buffer. This is the color site plan, does show the prop, part of the property that is not being rezoned but is being used for stormwater and tree save. The great majority, and Barrett will talk about this, but the great majority of neighbors were shown, who support this plan, they were shown this, and it shows the small-scale office on Silas Creek buffering the new townhomes, shows good interconnectivity, pedestrian-oriented business, building placement, and so on. This is the growth management, Silas Creek Parkway is the designated growth corridor, which Gary already showed. Again, this is the growth management plan, which is on page two of the 2016 area plan, and this shows the property in the suburban form growth corridor, which says it's suitable for commercial, for office, and for multifamily uses. This next slide shows Ebert Street, it's a minor thoroughfare, and Silas Creek Parkway classified as an expressway. Now, both have ample traffic capacity, as was shown in the staff report. Now, limited office for medical and professional offices is recommended near the intersection of thoroughfares and areas which already have residences. This is the language from the limited office purpose statement. Again, LO is intended to be a transition between residential and commercial districts and growth management areas two and three. So set forth in the staff report, this project, it exemplifies good planning principles. The growth corridors guidelines support office use on this very property. The area plan calls for townhouse structures at an intermediate density, and that's just what's being proposed. The area plan notes that office uses have few negative impacts on adjacent land uses and are an appropriate transition use between residential and more intense uses. And in fact, it's the low-intensity office uses which makes quality but affordable townhomes possible on this property. Now, some folks we've talked to, they didn't have real concerns about the project or the project on the site, what their concern was, might this set a precedent somewhere else in Ardmore? And we would contend that this is a unique vacant former farm at the very edge of Ardmore bordering Silas Creek Parkway. I don't believe there are any other similar sites like that in Ardmore. This rezoning is no precedent, and in fact, the bottom line is that quality residential is being added, not destroyed, in an area that has serious developmental challenges. This project adds residential to Ardmore, it protects existing residential in Ardmore, low-intensity residential, residentially compatible, limited office makes this project work for the neighborhood. It's attractive infill development that works here, meeting the goals and purposes of Legacy, the UDO, and the area plan. And we actually hope that this project will be an attractive live-work arrangement for professionals who might want to live there. And most, and very importantly, nearby neighbors support this project, and I've never seen more neighborhood outreach by a petitioner, and so Mr. Hagan will tell you about that.
Hello, my name is Barrett Hagan, I'm a developer, but I'm also an engineer. My address is 3859 Battleground Avenue, Suite 300, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. I am a, how do I go forward here? Okay, I got it, okay. So I started working on this project back in the fall, and I initially met with staff and shared my ideas. Then I went straight to the Ardmore Neighborhood Association and shared my ideas. Then based on... shared my ideas. Then, based on those two meetings, I ended up changing my plan to add a significant portion of it to be residential. I continued to keep the Ardmore Neighborhood Association informed and have met with them several times over the last few months and have corresponded by email. I've been readily available to meet or talk anytime that they would like. We sent out, we sent out letters to 270, or 207 parcels surrounding our site to try to get their input and also understand if they would support us or if they had any concerns. I offered to have two meetings, and they were invited to both. One was at The Quiet Pint, a local restaurant, and then the second one was onsite. We only had 10 people show up to the meeting at The Quiet Pint out of 207 letters. They all signed in support. My onsite meeting, one person came, and they didn't live in Ardmore. They just wanted to live there and wanted to have more information. So, we decided that that didn't, that wasn't enough outreach. So, we went door-to-door, and I knocked on most of these doors myself. The Eberts helped me and some other members of the development team, and we asked them if they got our letter first off. I didn't want to knock on anybody's door that we hadn't already contacted. And most everybody had seen the letter and read it, and out of the people we were able to talk to, we had 103 parcels sign in support. We had five say that they were neutral, meaning that they didn't really want to support or they didn't want to stand in opposition. They just would like to remain neutral. We had three people that said that they were against the development. And then, the remaining white in there, a lot of that is folks that we just couldn't get in contact with. But some of it is where maybe a husband or wife would like to talk to their significant other first before they sign anything, and so, you know, we tried to check back in. So, there's a few of those, but most of what you see is people that we weren't able to contact. I do have a couple of neighbors that are in this area that I'd like to have come up. The Mannings live in the parcel of that house that's right next to the church. They've lived there for a very long time. I'll let Mrs. Manning tell you about that. And can you, would you mind coming up?
Just about three and a half minutes left, just so everyone's kind of on the same page.
My name is Nancy Manning. I live at 1425 Ebert Street. My zip code is 27103. My husband and Leo have lived there for 60 years. Our property joins the Ebert property on the south and Twin City Baptist Church on the north. We have no objective to the development of this property. The Eberts have been needing to have something done to that, and so, we will approve that development, and the neighbors on Ebert Street approve it also. Thank you.
About three minutes.
And we've got Ann Walker. She lives on Eldorado. She'll like to speak a little bit.
My name is Ann Walker, and I live on, at 1407 Eldorado Road, right off, right the third, well, the second block down. My, I already told you that, okay. What I wanted to say was that I grew up about three miles down the road and from there where they're talking about, but I used to slip out on my pony and ride all the way up there because there were other ponies and horses around there. In fact, just on the other side of Silas Creek there, there was a lady who had a big training stable, and she taught horseback riding. I rode up there one time, and there was a big hedge along the, on the, by the track, and I hid there because I wanted to see what she was doing. I wanted to do it so badly, and she ran me off. And years later, I was working out at Tanglewood teaching riding, and I, and she moved her operation out there. And I asked her if she remembered running that kid off that was sitting on that pony. She said, "Oh, was that you?" But anyway, I'm familiar with all this area, and I'm a good neighbor, and I do a lot with them and for them, and I think this is a good, a good thing for our neighborhood. And I'm not opposed at all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
About two minutes.
Okay, two, okay. So, we've got some other people here in support. If you raise your hand. We've got some neighbors from Ardmore. We've got the Eberts. And I wanted to read something. There was another neighbor that wanted to come speak, but he was having some medical issues, and so, he asked if I could read this. He sent this to me this morning. He said, "To Barrett Hagan, respectfully, due to medical issues," let me tell you where he lives. He lives at 130 Miller's Crossing Court, which is about right there. So, he said, "Respectfully, due to medical issues, I'll be unable to attend the meeting scheduled for this evening. I feel that it is important for the board to receive input from neighbors who will be in direct sightline to their proposed project. My wife and I have lived in our home for 21 years, and we have several changes, we've seen several changes in that time. We recently opposed the cell tower directly behind our home, but it was approved. We feel that the proposed project as presented to us will be an asset to our property and will prevent future building of a project that could be detrimental to our property. Added tax revenue will also be a benefit to our city and neighborhood. Respectfully submitted, Dennis and Jane Henderson." And like I said, I can answer any engineering questions, and we also have our traffic engineer here as well. Oh, and I want to point out, I don't think this was communicated in the staff report, but Ebert Street right now sees about 5,000 cars per day, and with our development adding of 1,270 daily trips, that's something that happens continuously all day long, not at a peak time, would still leave Ebert Street at only about 45% capacity because it's designed to handle 13,800 cars per day.
Thanks, sir. William Ebert has signed up. Did you want to speak?
Well, he's the, he's the property owner, and we wanted to make sure we got everything done. And if y'all have questions for him about the property, we'd love for him to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, well, I mean, I didn't know if he wanted to say something. He had signed up.
He's got a whole 30 seconds left.
I've never been able to say much in 30 seconds.
All right, then. We'll turn to the opposition then. Ms. Kraus?
I'm Bonnie Kraus. I live at 2001 Boone Avenue, Winston-Salem, 27103. As you know, I'm a member of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association's zoning committee. I am here to speak for the Neighborhood Association to say that they definitely oppose this plan. I'm aware of some contacts, some trips, and some visits to the site, and some conversations with the developer or the planned builder or people who are expressing interest in this, but absolutely from the beginning, the Neighborhood Association is opposed to any commercial or institutional use of this property. We fought really hard at the Southwest Area Plan when they were being conducted in all the neighborhoods, and ours was one of the ones where we felt we had a lot at stake because, again, we're squeezed between two medical centers, and it seems like hardly a week goes by when somebody doesn't want to pop another one up someplace else, kind of like whack-a-mole. We took robust participation in the, in the site, in the area plans, and although we did make some concessions, we did not, in fact, hold out for every single thing we wanted. When that area plan was approved, we celebrated. That was a big win, we felt, for the Ardmore neighborhood. It was almost immediately, I don't even know if two weeks went by, before we began seeing proposals that people wanted to differ from that. They wanted to take off in a different direction and make an exception to what was in the site plan, I mean, the area plan, and this would be one of them. My cohort, I want to leave plenty of time for Julie to address some infrastructure concerns, which are very serious, but I do want to say that this, this is the core. You talk about it being the edge, as if it's a rim or maybe just, you know, some extra at the edge of the paper or something, the edge of Ardmore. This goes at the core, preserving a residential area from commercial or institutional intrusion. The site plan calls for it to remain residential. I understand that there are other growth corridor concerns that have been mapped out in different ways and everything, but this was a site-specific understanding that this was to remain residential. This plan would take it from 72 or 76 residences down to 30-something, and yet, it would still increase the traffic trips because of the commercial use of it, because the medical office use of it. So, in about 19 different ways, this really does go against what the Ardmore Neighborhood Association had fought for and what we continue to strenuously advocate. So, I'm going to leave Julie Magnus to talk to you about the rest of this.
Julie Magnus, 630 Fennemore Street, Winston-Salem, 27103, Ardmore Neighborhood Association Zoning Board. I just want to point out that it wasn't just one area plan where this particular plot was designated to stay residential, or the recommendation was made. The one back how many years ago? 2006 or so? Is that about right, Paul?
Yeah.
That one also had the same recommendation, and we spent a lot of time talking about it back then. One thing that I think we really need to go back, and I won't draw on that map here, but I think that the pictures that were shown by Gary really did not well portray how much residential really does sound, surround this piece. To be honest, this is commercial right here, and that's it. Everything else, this is all residential. This is residential. It is apartment buildings, but it is residential. This is all residential. This is residential. And you go all the way down to Silas Crossing, and it is 100% residential, except for St. John's. As a matter of fact, Katie's Crossing, I'm not sure it shows exactly here. I think this is Katie's Crossing. Katie's Crossing is only about a 20-year-old development. Most of this residential development is on Stub Street, and there's actually one piece of property there that's got a nice meandering stream, and I mean, I wish I had that landscaping outside my house. I do not think, when you've got an area that is completely residential, that it is going to be a problem to develop this as residential from, from a standpoint of people that would be willing to live there. But let's talk a little bit about that density and that traffic pattern. I know that it shows that Ebert can handle 13,000 trips per day. I seriously doubt that the Hawthorne-Ebert stoplight, or lack of stoplight or three-way stop, can handle 13,000 trips per day. Multiple times, it has been requested to have that location looked at for a stoplight because it is so hard to make a turn there, and if you get stuck five or six cars behind, somebody that's having to wait and wait and wait and wait, you're stuck a long time. This plan says that there will only be, oh, 15 trips that somebody would turn right and head up towards Hawthorne, and there are five streets that will take cars and traffic off in those directions. Well, those five streets are Boone. Boone doesn't go anywhere except into residential. There is Jefferson, once again, residential, not a shortcut to anywhere. Walker, once again, all residential, not a cut-through to anywhere. Now, you do have Sherwood, which you can take over to Miller, and maybe you're going to try to think about turning left there to head up to, catch the stoplight. Once Business 40 closes, Miller Street is going to be so heavily impacted because everybody coming from anywhere past Sandy Ridge Road is going to come on in down Interstate 40 and ride on up Miller. That's how Google used to get people to my house all the time. Then you've also got Sherwood, same thing, residential street, and it doesn't go anywhere. Cherokee the other way, yeah, goes down around a traffic circle to Bolton because it's already got a traffic impact. Peak times, traffic times, I think has been mentioned as AM and PM here with all this traffic, right? Some of the heaviest traffic time at this stoplight is when classes change at Forsyth Tech. So, you've got multiple peak times that are impacted. So, I'm not sure this traffic study really is accurate as to what we're actually going to see there. There's a big, big, big difference between 441 trips recommended on the area plans and 1,274. It's about 833, if I've got that correct. We have concerns also about a street possibly being put through this cut-through area. But yeah, as Bonnie just said, one of the biggest concerns I have is we just really don't have a stormwater plan that we feel we can get our teeth into. Originally, we were shown that the stormwater was going to be in this area, and there would be an access road through this lot 3. Don't know what I've done there. Just hope that I don't blow that away. I now, I'm looking at several different places where, when I look at these, and maybe, you know, we can have staff answer some of this, are all these pipes that are dumping into what's now going to be a stormwater pond? How is the stream going to be piped? It looks like from this picture right here that maybe there's a pipe that's just dumping water into this acquired tree save area, and is this tree save area going to see a lot of bulldozing to be able to get in and access what is going to be part of the stormwater plan? Are we going to save that? Is this tree save area going to go underwater so that then there's a root problem? I just don't feel that the stormwater here has really been addressed. Depending on what happens with this stream-fed pond, I think there's a huge potential to flood the apartment buildings that are already there facing Silas Creek Parkway. Like I said, I don't see a specific anything. The stream up here bubbles up out of the water, out of the ground, I'm told by Barrett. There is a pond that the church had to put in that overflows, comes down. There's rock up there so it doesn't erode the bank, and this comes down through a ravine. And to me, ravine says rock. So, are we really going to be able to do what they've said they want to do when there's a very good possibility that this area has a lot of rock in it? I don't know. I just think that there are a lot of unanswered questions as, as far as that goes. I also think that it's incredibly sad that we have all this green space and tree save area that nobody's going to get to enjoy that's up here. It's, it's been a chunk of land that has been plopped right in the middle of residential houses to become waterlogged, if my interpretation of what's going on there is correct. I don't know. But we do object to the density. We do not think that this is in keeping with the neighborhood because it's not residential, and there is nothing but residential up and down this part of Silas Creek Parkway. All the rest of it is, is south, except for what's directly across the street from this one little area. So, the Neighborhood Association is, is opposed to anything but residential. We have said that right from the beginning to Mr. Hagan. We have talked with him about the plans. We've asked questions, but we have not ever agreed to this plan. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If not, declared public hearing closed. I wanted to ask Ms. Kraus something. Okay, Ms. Kraus?
Yes?
Ms. Kraus, I was trying to understand specifically what the neighborhood was opposed to by looking at the, the area plan recommendations on that. Now, they've come in with multifamily, which is part of the recommendations, and it sounds like that RM18 is, is something that was in the area plan or agreed to, or about, I think the wording was 12 units, and that's close, right?
Yes.
But then there was another part of the area plan that was along Ebert that was talking about eight dwellings per acre.
That's right.
How, is your objection... How, is your objection around that, or is it around the commercial on Silas Creek?
The objection is overwhelmingly due to our, to the objection about the commercial, the medical units, or offices, or clinics, or whatever's going to be there. We see that as just the camel's nose under the tent. We have resisted this all over the quote "edges" of Ardmore, and entire hunks of the neighborhood have been gobbled up by medical offices. And there are empty parcels other places they certainly could build on if they wanted. The desirability of this particular property, I don't know, maybe it's price or whatever, but it was supposed to be residential, and we're sticking to that. We don't want the traffic, we don't want the change in the character of the neighborhood to move to this commercial or institutional use. What will happen if this goes in is if the next time somebody wants to buy up a few parcels across the street, or running up just a little bit further up Ebert, then they'll come back in with a proposal and say, "Well, it's already there, we're just going to be in keeping with what's there." But it will not have been in keeping what would be there if it were built in accordance with the area plan that we worked on so hard. Ardmore had, out of the sessions that were offered to Ardmore residents all over Ardmore, we had such overwhelming participation in that, that the planning staff and board were completely blown away. The very first meeting, we took the largest room at the Miller Park Rec Center, and they had to have a breakout room in addition, there were that many people showed up, and it stayed that way throughout. And we're adamant that this parcel should remain residential only.
Was there, so it sounds like there were many people involved.
Many, hundreds, I would say.
You were part of that?
Yes, yes, I went to three out of the four.
Was there opposition at that point to having it multifamily?
No.
There wasn't?
There was not opposition to having it multifamily, assuming, of course, it would be tastefully, or just, you know, the regular, you know, appropriate multifamily development. There's already a multifamily around that area, and we weren't objecting to that. We were dead-set against commercial or institutional invasion, because it is an invasion, it's the beginning of something we want to stop right at that intersection.
Did anybody speak for commercial development or low-impact office at that time?
Yes.
They did?
Yeah.
And so there was, so there wasn't a unified voice?
It was a question.
It was a question.
It came up as a question, and I do not remember a single person who thought the neighborhood would be improved. And I had just been elected president, so I was paying due attention to everyone's input. And I went back and forth between both rooms. It was a question about, and I think it was something along the lines of what's to keep them from using it as offices? And that's when it came up then. And there was, there was a serious round of approval of only residential and not offices. Because as I set up, Bethesda and Maplewood Way, you know, you know what I'm talking about. I mean, we've just seen it munch along like a, like a, you know, a little monster just nibbling away a little bit of the time of the neighborhood. And that would be what, in our opinion, this would start.
Thank you.
And if my calculations are right, it looks like with the area plan recommendations, you could get up to almost one hundred and forty, one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-eight at RM eighteen, right? Or just under RM eighteen?
Well, it was all developed RM eighteen, but the area plan actually recommends a transitioning, so we came up with around seventy-six units total.
Seventy-six.
Yeah.
Right. But if you eliminated the office and just came back with a RM eighteen, you could get up to one hundred and forty units, one hundred and thirty-eight.
Well, if you did RM eighteen on the entire site.
And that would be the neighborhood's preference, it'd be one hundred.
It would be preferable to commercial, yes. Although our preference is for, as you said, the graduated, or the modulated, you know, density differences. But, but that is a desirable area for housing, and it is needed, and will continue to be needed. And we can't put it back to residential once it's been offices.
Thank you, ma'am.
What's your trip generation on apartment? Is it four, six?
Six, six point six-five.
Six and a half per unit.
About a thousand.
I would like to say something, as the, I was the planning board liaison to that Southwest Area Plan update that was done in 2016. And so there was some discussion about this track. In fact, my recollection is that this was one of the most, if not the most discussed item in the plan. I think at one time someone had said something about a possible grocery store, that was one of the things that was discussed. And it got a lot of pushback, and I think that the overwhelming takeaway that I had from that was that people wanted it to be residential. And so I do think that the proposal here is not really in keeping with the area plan. It is on Track One, but if you're looking at the, at the entire site, it's really not in keeping, because the spirit of that recommendation was that the entire site remained residential. And, you know, so for that reason, this proposal is very problematic to me. I see it as quality development, especially the Track One townhomes are very attractive, and I can see why some of the surrounding neighbors would be in favor of that. But I do think that we should respect the, you know, the area plan process, and I see this as really problematic and not meeting that recommendation.
The area plan, there's two components of it. One is for the neighborhood, and one is that it's on Silas Creek Parkway. So I don't, I'm having a hard time just saying, well, it does agree with the area plan, because it is on Silas Creek Parkway, and it does meet the specifics for what's facing Silas Creek Parkway. So I don't quite understand the statement that it just doesn't comply with the area plan.
Well, I think the reason, what I'm saying is that this was a site that was singled out in the area plan, you know, they do, they take certain sites and consider them separately. And this one had a separate place in the plan where it was discussed, and it had very specific recommendations, the two-tiered densities that we're talking about, the different, so the idea was to have higher density close to Silas Creek and lower density away. So Track Two was supposed to be higher density, and Track One, lower density. That was the recommendation, it was very, very specific. And I think the, from the resident's perspective, they, I got the feeling that they felt like this was, in a sense, a kind of a negotiation. In other words, we'll agree to the higher density, which they may not have wanted, but what they got in exchange for that was the, that the site would be recommended as entirely residential. And so that's why I see it as kind of going back on the agreement in the plan.
Okay, but my understanding is the plan is not a site-by-site zoning, it's a general use.
Yeah, and good planning principles, like, you know, we read about and everything else, that it is the office lot, LO would certainly be a transitional, and one of the recommended preferred types of transitional uses of that land to get you to the residential, back to it. But anyway, that is some of the problems with parcel-specific area plan.
I think it does, you know, it does acknowledge the neighborhood and the community aspect in requiring that form, which the proposal does. So it is taken into consideration, I think.
I'd like to entertain a motion for someone, unless we...
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
There's a motion, Mr. Lamb, second with Mr. Grubbs. Discussion?
Yes, you know, neighborhoods have to decide where those lines are, where you're going to have office or commercial, and you just, you have to be comfortable with that, because as a residential owner, buying into that neighborhood and investing your life in there, you've got to have an expectation of what that's going to be. And the area plan helps neighborhoods flush that out, talk about it, know what they can expect in terms of where their house is going to be, what their property value is along the future. This of all the cases we've looked at has been the clearest in terms of neighborhood expectations. And the other thing that feels great about it being just residential has been the push by the staff and the board here in terms of infill and trying to get increased density of residential. And this area is perfect for that, the neighborhood agrees to that, and so it really, it really works. Whereas if we look around the town at the empty offices and things like that, there's a, there's a different sense. So for me, if the neighborhood is saying, "Our line is that this area isn't going to have commercial," then we ought to be listening to the neighborhood on that. We've been through similar cases on First Street, on Walkertown Road, and things like that, where you don't want to start something rolling if there's a clear sense that, that the neighbor's expectation and their investment in their home is that that will remain residential in the future.
Comment I'd make is if I lived out there, I think I'd rather have those two office buildings there than more multifamily. And as far as what the neighborhood feels, one hundred and three said yes, five said no.
In the area.
Right. You seem to have...
People closest to it, so it's overwhelming support, it appears, from the folks.
It seems you have neighbors and neighborhood, and in this case, I guess the neighbors being closest to it have not checked it overwhelmingly.
Ms. Benning lives next door, and she was all for it. Anyway, we have a motion for approval and further discussion. Those in favor? As opposed? Two opposed. Thank you.
Well, there can't be too much of a loss. We've got six. We've got six.
Oh, the West suburban.
We're going to do a break now? We're going to need to change the tape, or, you've got thirty minutes left on the tape.
Thirty minutes, so, yeah.
Probably need to take a break.
Yeah.
Probably so.
Yeah.
Let's take a five-minute break and let them change the tape.
Is that how they do it?
It's all digital, index.
Get the next one, Mr. Roberts?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, welcome back. Next item on the agenda is zoning docket three-three-six-five. Petitioner is Tony Johnson, and the request is a point-four acre, point-four-two acre tract located on the southwest corner of Peace Haven Road and Commonwealth Drive, and the request is a rezoning special use limited from RS nine to neighborhood office special use limited. Legacy's growth management plan located within the yellow suburban neighborhoods, growth management area three. And this is aerial photographs showing the subject property there, there's currently a single-family home located on the site, surrounded by public right-of-way. This is a current location to the left of the image of the subject property where Commonwealth Drive used to come into Peace Haven Road, that was realigned somewhere around in 2004. And this is the area plan, the West Suburban Area Plan update. It's located to, within the single-family area, yellow, recommended to stay, stay single-family residential. The red is commercial, blue is institutional, that's Calvary Baptist Church. The browns are various densities of multifamily. So this is kind of a transitional area there between the commercial and the single-family area residential located around this site. These images are taken on site, this is from Peace Haven Road looking into the subject property. And this is from looking into the site, or looking from the site on Commonwealth Drive, residential area, and looking on the Gester Place from the site. The planted unopened right-of-way that I mentioned earlier is just to the left of this image there. And staff does mention that if that was to be closed, that it would give the property a little bit more residential use on their, on their site. This is looking back towards Peace Haven, in the background, the subject property's to the right. The petitioner has volunteered a condition that they would relocate the driveway if this is approved from Peace Haven, back to one of these streets here, and staff does have a little bit of concern about locating a non-residential driveway onto a residential The current area plan and the draft update do not recommend office on the subject property. Staff is concerned that if this was approved, it could be a precedent for some other non-residential zonings further up north on Peace Haven. The request may lead to other similar rezonings, as I mentioned, further north on Peace Haven. And the relocation of the existing driveway from Peace Haven to one of the adjacent streets may have some negative impacts on the nearby homes. So staff's recommendation is for denial, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
What is involved in closing that right-of-way, the residential street area?
They would file a petition with the Public Works Department, and it goes to the city council for a public hearing. All the neighbors are notified, it's about a four, five, six-month process. And then what happens typically, unless some other alternative arrangements are made, is that the property owners on either side of that would then own to the center line of that easement. There is a water line that runs through there, so the city would need to retain an easement for that water line, but then the property owners would acquire that property and be responsible for maintenance and tax pay on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, was the ninety-degree turn a later cut-through into Commonwealth there?
Well, the T-intersection, that's what resulted in around 2004, yes. It came in at an odd angle.
Yeah, I remember having a friend down there and always going sort of split off in there.
It was at an odd angle, and it was so close to the intersection of Country Club, so that's why it was realigned.
It was pretty dangerous. That was actually under the two thousand bonds, bond projects was to straighten that out.
And they actually pulled up the asphalt on the other one?
Yes.
Yes.
That's grass now.
Any other questions right now? Then, Mr. Tozier?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rick Tozier, 110 Brookdale Court, Brookdale Circle Court, Winston-Salem, 27106. I'm here representing Tony Johnson, the property owner, and also as the potential buyer of the property. And I want to clarify one thing, I think before I begin. See if you can see this. I was not clear on the process of this request, and it's my fault. What we are proposing is not this complete list of zoning uses, but really just simply as a, as a neighborhood, as an office for our business, which is Residential Construction Company Custom Homes, or another just pure office setting. So we are willing to strike out most of these uses that are non-residential or very specific office, and I'm not sure if I'm being clear on that or not. But just a very quick history of our understanding of this property. The city purchased the property in 2000, and the right-of-way that we're showing was closed in 2004. One of the things that result in this right-of-way is that, or then, I'm sorry, in 2006, the property was purchased by Tony Johnson, who's the current property owner. He lived in it for a while, and then he tried to use it as a rental with limited success. The primary reason for his limited success is that the property is right at the beginning of a right-hand turning lane. This turning lane, if you're going, I guess, west on Peace Haven, is right at the entrance to that property. A traffic count on that road, I believe the report says about sixteen thousand cars a day, if I remember that correctly. So the egress in and out of property is very difficult, it's dangerous getting in and out. And then, two years later, in this location right here, there were, I just can't see this very well, but traffic cones installed, so that it is, it's impossible to turn left out of the property, and if you're returning to the property as a resident, you can't turn left into it, you have to go down to Commonwealth, make a U-turn, and come back. You have to go down to Commonwealth, make a U-turn, and come back. So, for that reason, Mr. Johnson, who actually wrote a letter to present, said, "I've had a very hard time getting decent quality tenants in the property, and he would prefer to see it used as a clean office space that would be a good neighbor to the adjoining property." We did do a community outreach, our neighborhood outreach, to 30 properties. We were able to reach 15 of them of the 15. We had nobody that came and said that they were opposed to it. We had nine that were in favor, and if I get my numbers right, a handful that were, you know, indifferent to it. And I believe there's some neighbors here that want to speak to that later. Our desired use of it, I'm sorry. Broke my glasses just before I got up here, so I can see half of what I'm doing. Our interest in the property, again, is to purchase it from Mr. Johnson. As a part of that, we would agree to move the driveway off of Peace Haven and close it. We would extend the sidewalk that would currently be broken by the driveway, and the driveway would be relocated on Commonwealth Ave., not on Guestner, so it's on the main thoroughfare going, hitting the neighborhoods and not on the residential street behind us. I think that's that.
Can you explain that one more time? That drawing, or is that drawing part of the?
I'm sorry.
Or we'll leave it for later. We'll leave it for later, I don't want to chew up your time.
Yeah. So, that is, the site plan that I have is not a site plan that I submitted to planning as a formal site plan. It is the, this is the, minus my drawing on top of it, that is the site plan that the city surveyor drew back in 2000 relocating Commonwealth Ave. to the east side of the property.
And I wasn't clear on those uses you struck through, all of them, but anyway, basically, you went for office and what else? I mean, I couldn't, you would leave the residential uses in.
Yeah, so, it's currently RS9, so we would not want to strike out any of the current residential uses. And then, in terms of the neighborhood office, I guess, again, I'm speaking this incorrectly, but we would only want to be able to change the zoning to actual office space. So, for our business, or if I suppose, another business similar to it, that our intent is to have offices inside and a conference room where we can entertain clients or work with our clients.
So, am I correct, you want to leave child daycare center?
I do not.
Okay.
Just cross out the other one down here.
Yeah. Down the...
There you go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any interest in leaving anything that's, other than just plain pure office, so, see that better.
Okay.
I don't understand that the government offices also we would strike out.
Looks like you crossed out offices, though.
Yeah. You want to leave the children's office after public...
I think we're understanding, and we can come back to this later and clarify this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else that'd like to speak in support of this? Then we'll turn to the opposition. First person signed up is Sue Letchworth.
Yes, my name is Sue Letchworth, and I live at 220 Commonwealth Drive. That's 127104. We actually live three houses down from this, this property. And I did have a conversation with his wife, more I thought FYI, just to give me information about what was going to happen there. There were some issues I had that, that your report, I think, probably addressed some of those, and he certainly has addressed some of them. The neighborhood office would be primarily to accommodate very low intensity offices. The limited office with the things that I read on the website that I guess now he's marking through, and I would certainly think none of that would need to apply here. But one of my major concerns, and I understand the location of that property, why it's the way it is, and it's actually between the old Commonwealth Drive and the new Commonwealth Drive, so it kind of put that piece of property right between those two streets. And I understand how difficult it is to get to that property from Peace Haven Road. But I have a real concern that there would be a street from that property for property that's zoned business into our neighborhood. And even though Commonwealth is, you might call it a thoroughfare through our development, it's still the end road into our development. So, it's still a private street. It's not, you know, it's not a street. It is a street, there's a high volume of traffic on it, and now I can tell you it's almost a U-turn street. We've got a circle drive in front of our house, and if there's not a car there, there are many people that can't make the turns on Peace Haven that they would need to, that'll come down Commonwealth. If, make a U-turn at the very beginning of it, go down, make a U-turn at Guestner Place, or go down and make a U-turn through our circle drive and back out. And when they're making some of those U-turns, you know, they're running off the road, and so, you know, there are holes beside the road and all. So, it's not a street that's not traveled a lot when it was relocated. So, I guess my next concern would be when you open the door, what might come forth down the road? How, how would this impact our neighborhood down the road, or what would happen down Peace Haven Road? I mean, you have an office here, and I'm not saying he would be a bad tenant. I'm, I'm not saying that, and there have been undesirable tenants in that house. Rental property sometimes never is desirable property, depending upon who you get in there. But I'm just saying what long-term, what impact might it have? And we do still have a private neighborhood, and we do still have many good neighbors down there. We've lived there 48 years, so we've lived there a long time. Before the, the new Commonwealth Drive was constructed, that was actually Mr. Jones's cornfield, so we used to buy corn from him when he had his cornfield there. So, I wasn't happy that they destroyed his cornfield and our, our corn supply, you know, was gone. But those are my concerns and things that I would like for you to think about. I'm not sure what a good fit for that would be. I'm not saying that an office, I'm just concerned about when he leaves, then what down the road? What, what could come there? I'm not, you know, and, and the fact that they, they would be putting a public, they would be putting a driveway for a business onto a private street in a development. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
I'm correct, the track, traffic generation for neighborhood office is essentially the same single-family residential house?
Very comparable.
Okay. Patricia Wallace?
Good evening, I'm Patricia Wallace. I live at 511 Rushland Drive, Winston-Salem 27104. I had a big speech planned out, but I'm not going to read it because everybody's been covering everything else. The one thing I do want to show you is this map, and I can't see it all between here and here. It's not zooming out. One of the things I want to mention is, they only notified the neighborhood within 500 feet. However, I live 1,000 feet away, but this is my only entrance to my house. There's this whole Rolling Hills goes all the way to Stockdale, which is way up here. So, all of these houses, this is our only entrance and exit out of this neighborhood. Now that they've built even further out, there are other neighborhoods that actually have to access this property. The property, as I mentioned before about the traffic trying to turn into this property, if they would like to make a driveway on Commonwealth, fine, but leave it residential. It does not need to be business, because once they make a business on, on Peace Haven, it will just spread like a cancer all the way down Peace Haven. Since Mr. Johnson purchased the property, commercial trucks have been seen at this property, and building supplies have been seen at the back of this property. Since the signs went up for rezoning, the trucks and supplies have since been removed. I'm hearing tonight that he is planning on selling this property to somebody else. The other thing was a traffic impact study, or you called it a traffic impact analysis, I believe. I'd like to see a new one performed on this property, because I see a lot of people coming down Country Club, heading west. I have actually witnessed them turn right onto Peace Haven, turn around in Commonwealth, go back up to Country Club, and make another right, and end up going straight west. And it's because the traffic is so backed up on Country Club. That was it. Everybody's talked about everything, like the zoning. I know that this property used to be owned by my best friend's grandmother, and when she passed away, her parents sold the property to Winston-Salem as a request by Winston-Salem to relocate Commonwealth because it was too close to Country Club. So, this is definitely a problem area.
Commonwealth's a dead-end street, you say that's the only way into your house?
It used to be.
Okay.
But since they have built behind us and around us, this neighborhood over here that's off of Williams Drive, and all of this, this has been added since originally, since Commonwealth was originally put in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kim Metzler?
About four and a half minutes.
My name is Kim Metzler. I live at 541 Rushland Drive. With your permission, I have a letter from Mr. John Welsh, who lives at 261 Commonwealth, that I would like to read to you, that probably echoes the sentiments of many of us in the neighborhood. And then I've got a few comments to add, if that's all right. Mr. John Welsh, who resides at 261 Commonwealth, wrote that he opposes the proposed zoning change for the following reasons. Rolling Hills is a single-family residential neighborhood. Current zoning ensures that traffic at the intersection will consist of only residential traffic. There's no business congestion caused by the property in question. The entrance to Rolling Hills has a residential appearance, which was changed drastically when they moved the entrance. It also matches the adjacent properties. A change to office zoning will potentially adversely change the desirability of Rolling Hills for people looking for housing in the future. A light office zoning designation could allow a less desirable tenant to rent the space. A light office zoning designation might encourage the property owner to acquire the vacant lot next to it from the city for office or business, business development, excuse me. There are available offices, spaces in the area. The city's business community as a whole will not benefit from this proposed change. I think everybody saw pictures, and I don't know if these will come up, but this is the house that is in question. As far as we know, this is a picture that was taken by one of our neighbors. As you can see, this has been within the past, prior to the zoning signs going up. There has been someone operating a business out of this, our light office, for quite some time. We've called numerous times because the trash cans are placed at the street, they're left there not in accordance with our recycling and garbage pickup. This was taken today, and unfortunately, I don't think you can see it, but there's trash laying here along the sidewalk that nobody could come, and this was prior to coming to this meeting. Unfortunately, my pictures do not come across, but there has been deliveries made, supplies left under the carport. There's been deliveries and supplies made to the back of the property. What they are, we don't know. We would be trespassing. This is the intersection. The house right here is the sidewalk. These are the bushes that go in front of the right-of-way that is there now that the city owns when they move the street. This is congestion at 2:11, 2:00 this afternoon when I went out. This traffic backs up. They at one time had a sign saying, "Please do not walk the entrance into Commonwealth. It's unsafe going in and out." You guys did place the pylons, which has made it a little safer. This is a TransAid who was waiting there, trying to make the left-hand turn from the CVS parking lot on to Peace Haven. As you well are aware, we have added Sherwood Forest off of Mountain View in the back. Many homes were built. There's three entrances into what we call Greenbrier, I think is the first entrance there off of Peace Haven. You have, I think the name of that street is, is it Whitman coming down? You've got Commonwealth, you've got Mountain View. There has been so many new homes added. Sherwood Forest comes through the front of Commonwealth. They come down the street, they come down Commonwealth to make a right to go down Peace Haven, because they cannot make a left turn out of Mountain View. Neighborhood office may not be the solution. Residential may not be the solution. It is an unsafe neighborhood. Commonwealth is not safe. There's no sidewalk. It is a rural country road. People come in and make U-turns. We call constantly because of the dips in the road, the gravel. It's not even safe to walk on. We talk about trying to build neighborhoods that allow us to walk. We were happy when Harper Hills common, we were happy with that. We cannot safely even walk over there to the grocery store or over there to the restaurants because Commonwealth is not safe in the condition that it's in. Adding an entrance is only going to make it that much safer. Cars are in and out all day to this business. He's got clients. He is a contractor from what we understand from the internet. No, nothing against Mr. Dozer, who wants to purchase the property. He's building in Brookberry. He's done lots of remodels over in Blaina Vista, according to his website for Sonoma. It may not be a good fit at this proper location. Thank you.
That's all the time, but Mr. Mr. Dwygans has signed up. I'm going to let Mrs. Dwygans speak anyway. She can speak for both of them. Is she still here? Hetsy Dwygans? They may have gone anyway. Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Comments, questions, board members?
Let me ask Steph, if, if, if it, if the zoning goes through as being requested, that doesn't control that house? Does it, does it, can that house be torn down and another office be built there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, I mean, we really have to look at the land in terms of this thing rather than the private residence that's on it. This isn't a, an owner-occupied office, in other words, that is going in there. This is just changing the land to office, and somebody could come in and build it something totally different.
But there could be a condition.
Well, that's what I was talking to Aaron about. In the past, there were times when we would perhaps do a condition, say, and maintain the existing structure, but we run into situations where that's not, you know, sometimes the structure gets torn down. What's the remedy to that? I mean, once the structure's gone, the structure's gone, you know, if it were through an S and it matched, you know, matched, you know, through an improved site plan, I mean, but through a condition, it would be difficult. And Paul probably has more, I mean, he's probably been more on those discussions. I just know that I don't, I think we got away from doing that after we got burned a couple times.
Right, right, exactly. We got away from that before those reasons. I just wanted to point out one other thing is that you've got that remnant right-of-way that the pavement has been taken up. It's, it's planted in grass now. There's nothing that would prevent someone from petitioning that right-of-way to be closed, and then the property could be added to this lot to have a more viable residential lot or even to give more options for relocating the driveway behind there. So, so I just want to point out that regardless of what happens, but particularly if the zoning stays residential, there's a way to make it more viable as residential by closing that right-of-way that's beside it.
But if Mr. Tozier wanted this house, and used this house as his office... But if Mr. Dozer wanted this house and use this house as his office, he could do a special use zoning, bring a site plan in and showed that house would remain and that it would have to, I mean, we could do that, right? And he could eliminate all those other uses and come in here and be very specific with it.
He could.
I don't necessarily say that the house would have to stay, but the site plan would dictate that if he tore that house down, he had to build something back in that same footprint.
Yeah.
Right.
What are the options as far as moving the driveway? Could you take it back to Commonwealth?
He would have to get a driveway permit for a non-residential driveway, so either on Gessner or Commonwealth.
Even if it's residential now, is it, is that a private or is that a?
No, it's public.
It's a public.
Both streets permitted.
Okay, so he could.
So, even if it remained residential and they wanted to relocate the driveway, they would have to get a driveway permit to do that, right?
Actually, we don't require driveway permits for residential homes. Yeah. But he would, he would probably have to work with inspections or Public Works Department to close up that, you know, to put new curbing where it currently is now in Peace Haven. But as far as attaching to Commonwealth, as I understand, we don't require driveway permits for single-family homes.
It's being used now or could be, it's being used now or it's previously been used as residential, and the problem you don't have, I'm really trying to find out, is the problem just the increase in cars that we're going to have from business? Is that the real issue is the traffic?
No, I mean, traffic's really comparable. It's kind of, it's the precedent, really. But it is a unique piece of property, and we understand it. It's surrounded by right-of-way. It is a transitional area, and they're not asking for commercial uses, but it is contrary to the area plan.
But there is, there is commercial just on the other side of the old right-of-way for Commonwealth.
Yes, yes. And you have apartments across the street.
Hey, there's also commercial or offices up against Peace Haven scattered down toward the neighborhood, aren't there some other businesses that are in the houses?
There's a couple of little non-conforming properties in there.
Okay.
But I don't believe, I don't think they're zoned. I think they're all non-conforming. This actually was, this was cited as a notice of violation is how this came in. I'm not sure how it came to our attention, but we cited them sometime January, February. And that's, whenever I left after consenting, that's what I went, because we weren't aware it was under a violation until one of the folks that came in told us. So, I wanted to go do some research. And we cited for running an office.
Running an office.
Instruction office, correct.
Picture's worth a thousand words. That picture that was submitted by the resident that showed the traffic being so heavy along that, at that time period, that's not a constant problem. That's more of something, and I don't know if a resident could speak to that now that we closed the.
I go through there, if not daily, at least several times a week, and it's, there's not often a time that it isn't congested in there.
That picture was in a non-rush hour situation.
Non-rush hour.
But the traffic's not the issue here. Traffic is usually residential or whether it's commercial.
No, it's just an awkward situation with that driveway being where it is, and it would be much better were it to the rear connecting with Glassner or to, or over to Commonwealth.
Those are probably recommendations you'd have for a site plan.
Yeah, but again, the awkward situation with it being non-residential is you have a non-residential driveway coming out into a residential area.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that the, that the property is, in a sense, the entrance to that neighborhood, and in a sense advertises that neighborhood, and the detriment that having a commercial property would be to that, and seeing that there are other options that the property owner could bring in to us, I would make a motion to support the staff's feeling for denial.
A second. Motion, Mr. Brown, second. Mr. Leake, any discussion?
I'd just like to say that I do see the precedent as a concern as well as the impacts of a business operating right there at the entrance to the neighborhood.
I think this one's a little tough because you have a property that you'd like to have useful and be able to be used, but.
It occurs to me that the city didn't do anybody any favors by doing what, I mean, yeah, they could have, and obviously, they were trying to avoid a taking situation and having to buy more right-of-way than they needed to, but they kind of run it straight through the house. Off, probably.
Any other comments, questions? There's a motion for denial. Those in support of that motion? Opposed? Ms. Smith and Mr. Lamb opposed. Denied, seven-two.
Mr. Younger.
Okay, Steve. You got your four and a half minute presentation ready?
Yes. I'll try my best if I can keep the knack of having to jump slides on my, but I'm going to give a very brief overview of the West Suburban Area Plan update. See the boundaries real quickly are Ronaldo Road to the north, Side Street Parkway to the east, US 421 to the south, and basically the route of the western portion of the northern Beltway to the west. We had very good community participation. Had the most attendance that I've been in an area plan that I've been involved in, so very pleased with the turnout. This is a map of existing land use. If you look on the, Muddy Creek basically bisects this area in a north-south direction, so the western half, you'll see white and green and light yellow, which means large lot residential, agricultural, or vacant properties. And if you look on the right side of the slide, you'll see most of it is dark yellow and other colors, very little white, whatever goes jumping on. And so, most developments already occurred on the east side of Muddy Creek, so most of the future development will be on the west side. The proposed land use basically just fills in the western half with, as single-family residential. The reason for that, you may ask, some of it's agricultural, is that most of the, the vast majority of the area is sort of a default zoning of residential, single-family nine, which requires, you know, minimum 9,000 square foot lots. So, this is a pretty, pretty conservative land use plan. There are seven activity centers. There's one on Yackenville Road, one on Ronaldo Road at Fairlon, two on Robin Hood Road, Sherwood Forest, and Robin Hood Village, and three on Country Club, Gordon Manor, Hopper Hill Commons, and the intersection of Metalark Drive and Country Club. The major transportation recommendations is the most immediate one's been mentioned ever before is the widening of Metalark to three lanes. It'll be starting construction this year, and it will go from Country Club to Robin Hood Road. There'll also be a wide side path on the east side, which will allow both for walking and biking. The, let me go back. The other major projects are the western loop of the northern Beltway will begin construction in the next five to 10 years, and there are three bridge replacements that are anticipated to start in the next two or three years. The major greenway recommendation, there's one greenway, the Muddy Creek Greenway, which is shown in, outlined in green. It goes from, again, Country Club Road to Rob, or Jefferson Elementary School, which is just north of Robin Hood. It's about three miles in length and is very heavily used. The next construction will be an extension of that greenway to the north from Jefferson Elementary to Yackenville Road. That's anticipated to start in the next five to seven years. And then extend Muddy Creek Greenway to the south from Phillips Bridge Road to US 421. And finally, I just want to mention very briefly, there are two historic structures, the Thomas Christian Schultz House and the John Henry Poff House. Two historic markers, one commemorating Poff Town, the other Five Row at Ronaldo House. And there'll be a new unveiling this year to recognize the Polo Fields at Ronaldo, which is basically located near Spies Elementary School. And that is the end of the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Steve, I have a couple of questions. One, the last case we had was about the congestion up there at Peace Haven and Country Club. Did any residents express concern about that? And was there any attempt to deal with the problems like the left turns, you know, for example, coming into those residential streets?
Yeah, they complained about all the streets were congested. Part of the problem is with Muddy Creek, it limits the east-west connections. You've only got the three, Yackenville Road, Robin Hood Road, and Country Club Road. So, that makes more of a grid system not possible, so that's why the north-south roads on either side of Muddy Creek like Peace Haven and Metalark are so congested. So, but we didn't get into specifics on specific intersections.
Yeah, and I don't believe anyone mentioned anything about Commonwealth and Peace Haven.
No, no, no one.
Okay, and then my second question is about the northern Beltway. One of the things that we've seen closer to where the Beltway is coming in, where the Beltway is sooner to be built, the northern Beltway, say, between business, US 52 and Ronaldo Road. There's that section. That'll be built soon. What's happening is there's a lot of clear-cutting because owners see that their land is in the, near or in the path of the Beltway, and it's causing a great deal of concern for residents. Not just the land that is in the path of the Beltway, but even close to the path, because they're thinking that they might want to use their land for something more intense. So, I have been an advocate for a while for doing some kind of pre-planning, looking at the impacts that this Beltway is going to have, and try to come up with some solutions, especially.
The timing of your comment is perfect because at work session this, in two weeks, we're going to be bringing you a report and some ideas about what we call Area Plan 3.0, the third iteration of area plans. And I won't, I won't let all of the cat out of the bag until we do do that, but one of the things we want to do is focus on some things like some specific targeted areas like around Beltway interchanges and other targeted places where some more detailed planning could help. So, that's, that's one of the things you'll hear about at work session for the, kind of the next, next generation of area planning efforts.
I look forward to that.
Let me add one more thing. We did have a person in the audience that was here, but she left. She was concerned. She lives on property right behind, I've forgotten the name of the shopping center. Shopping center faces Yackenville, where the Harris Teeter used to be located. It's at the corner of Yackenville and Ronaldo. She lives behind it, on the other side of Muddy Creek, and she's very concerned. Our map showed the greenway going across the property, and she's very concerned about that, didn't really want it, and mentioned that at a meeting. And Amy Crum, who works with Greenways, provided some wording in the plan that said, you know, when they get to that point, they'll look at an alternative that may involve going by the shopping center instead of, and once she saw that wording, she took it and left. So, she was, she was satisfied with that.
This is a public hearing. If anyone here would like to speak either for or against. And if not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any approval? Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Hicks, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed, as you know. Good job, Steve. Thank you.
And just want to acknowledge Chris Leake, who came to all the meetings as your planning board liaison to this process.
Is that the reason nobody showed up today? All the questions, they showed up here. Okay. All right. Yes, we're, staff report?
Okay, real quick here. We had a deadline, our application deadline date this past Monday, so we have three new rezoning cases, one parkland disposition, and one subdivision that'll be coming to you at your May meeting. Just wanted to check in with you on your agenda books. You know, Aaron sent you that thing about one of the staff reports being missing, but Arnold's wasn't wrong. Was everyone else's right, who got a hard copy of the book?
Mine was right.
Mine was right.
Mine was right.
Okay. I think what, we researched that with the print shop, and the print shop prints the agenda books in two batches. The first batch are the ones that go to you all on Friday. And so, apparently, they got those right. The second batch they print, I guess it's on Monday, and it's for the rest of us, and that's where the problems were. So, I think we were hoping that you didn't have any.
That was just a test for Gary and Aaron instead of reading the books.
Yeah.
That's right. But they are aware of the issue, so they're going to try their best not to repeat that problem there. At the work session, I just mentioned when Melinda asked the question, area plan's 3.0. Kirk's going to be bringing you a report on some ideas we have for the next generation there. Marco's going to bring you a report on corridors, so the possible future corridor planning. And then Kelly, I am, I think we're going to have to email that to you because I forgot to bring the hard copies with me, but it was requested last time, a one-pager on the infill thing, and I had those. I left them in my office, so we will, we will email you tomorrow, the one-pager summary of those recommendations there. And last but not least, I want to introduce a couple of people here. We have a program in the city that is, it's succession planning, so it's offering an opportunity for employees who want to look to advance their careers, to kind of look at, look at different areas, get, get an idea of how different folks handle things and all that. So, for some, some reason understandable to me, these two folks said, "I'd like to come and shadow you while you're at a meeting." And I said, "Well, we got a planning board meeting coming up." I think maybe they got more than they bargained for, for this particular meeting, but I want to introduce Robert Reese over there, who is the acting emergency management director for the city and county, and Mary Johnson, who is with the information services department. So, they're the ones that keep all of our computers and electronics working in good order. And so, just wanted to acknowledge and recognize them for sitting through and kind of learning all about the public process here, so. And that's it for staff report.
Okay. Any board members, anything for the, go to the order?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? We're adjourned. All right.